So we'll call to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Okay, I just want to report out that we did have a closed session and there's nothing to report out from closed session. So I'm just going to read the meeting protocol and then we'll get started. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with the Roberts Rules of Order, and the council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place in silent mode. We'll review the agenda at 10 o'clock PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. So with that, we'll get started, and first I'll do the announcements, and then we'll get started on the interviews. So we have...
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
You might want to start with the roll call and the approval of the agenda, unless you want to change the order.
No, thank you, thank you. So, thank you. The minutes shall reflect that all council members are present. And I'd like to have a motion for approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting, but Garrett, did you want to speak on the agenda? Thank you.
Yes, members of the council, with one item we'd like to actually pull from the agenda and continue it to February, that's item 12. Specifically, that's the item that deals with discussion, consider residents' petition regarding the noise ordinance. Both the resident and the owner have indicated that they'd like to continue the item to February 12th. And with that, also with regard to the two public hearing items, one on signs and the other on the ordinance related to the business formula regulations, just wanted to point out that actually staff will be recommending that we also continue those two items. We have received comments on one, the sign ordinance specifically, from council member Winesoff, that we believe that what we'd like to do is prepare a red line for the council to take a look at. We just didn't have time to do that, so we'd like to continue that item if no one's here to speak on that item. And conversely, similarly, on the business formula ordinance, the mayor has provided us with some suggestions. We'd like some time to prepare the red line, and so that item we'll also recommend a continuation if no one's here from the public to speak on those items. So I don't know if the council wants to see if anyone would like to speak on those items, in which case we would.
Why don't I ask, is anyone here prepared to speak on the two public hearings, one on the sign ordinance and the formula business ordinance? So seeing none, we, unless, if members of the council agree, we can continue those two items to the February meeting? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to continue those two items to the next regular council meeting.
And item 12 as well?
Item 12 as well.
The noise ordinance, okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, so motion, read, second, Gutter?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Michelle. I will learn this at one point. Okay, and then when we get to the consent calendar, I want to bring up a couple of things on a couple of items, but we'll wait till we get to that. Okay, so with that, and thank you for reminding me I needed to go through that process, let's go through the announcements. We have four vacancies on the planning commission, one vacancy on Park, and one on the Fairfax Open Space Committee. I'd like to just remind people, if you'd like to apply for those vacancies, you can find the application on the town website and send that into our clerk, Michelle Gardner. Another announcement, and I've got a couple to add. The Fairfax and San and Selmo Open Space Committees are hosting a workshop on preserving open space via the development of tax assessment districts on this coming Saturday, 12 to 3:00 PM here in the Women's Club. The Fairfax Food Pantries is Saturdays, 9 to 11. The Fairfax Community Church on 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are always needed for the food pantry, and it's a great opportunity. There are many people in Fairfax who need additional food, and nobody has to show that they live here or the reasons why, so please tell your friends, anybody who needs help, go to the food pantry. I have two additional announcements, unless somebody else has other announcements?
No.
Also, the Fairfax Open Space Committee and the San and Selmo Open Space Committee are co-hosting another workshop in the Fairfax Women's Club, and that will be on Saturday, January 24th, noon to 3:00 PM, and that's for designating priority conservation areas. This program is something that ABAG does, and it's in order to devote resources to open space areas, so stay tuned for that one. That'll be another good one. So there's a lot coming up. There's also another workshop coming up, January 22nd, Thursday, here in the Women's Club, 5 to 7:00 PM, and that's on the Housing Element Workshop, and Jim Moore and other folks will be hosting that workshop for the public.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Interject for one second. We did receive an email from a member of the public asking that we potentially consider changing the meeting time for the January 22nd meeting. Instead of 5 to 7, that we move it to 7 to 9 to accommodate those who are working during those hours. I would like to put that out there for consideration.
And I think that would be an excellent suggestion.
We noticed the meeting 10 days ahead from 5 to 7. So I guess we, I'll tell you what...
Let's have our town attorney weigh in on this one. I think we've still got time to renotice.
Well, it's a 10-day notice. You said regardless, you could...
Janet, how about pressing the button?
I did. Oh, there I, oh. Okay, all right. Can you hear me now? Okay, regardless, I mean, it's a 10-day notice. You may not have time to renotice it, but you can if it's, what, it's 5 to 7, and you want to set it 7 to 9? Is that what you want to do?
So we also sent out a whole slew of letters to stakeholders on Monday and Tuesday. So everyone was...
And, excuse me, and the key factor here is it's later, not earlier. So you can basically continue it or move it, you know, open it and then move it to 7, two hours later, and everybody comes back. The key is that people can come still. It's not earlier. It's not before, which you wouldn't be able to do if you had to renotice it. But in this case, if you wanted to push it out and wait a little bit, and, you know, you start it up, and then you say to people, "We're taking a break. We'll be back at 7."
That would work.
Well, let's do that, because I think also even for my schedule, I may be able to attend then. I think this is an important issue for the town, so if we can do it that way, I think that would work. Thanks for bringing that up, Vice Mayor.
May I suggest also, at least do a briefing of, you know, an outline of what it is, because I know I myself, I could only make it from 5 till about 6:30 that evening, so there may be other people in the same boat.
So if I hear correctly, what we'll do is we'll open up as scheduled. I'll give an overview of what the meeting's for. We'll entertain discussion and comments, and then we'll take a break, and I'll give the presentation again at 7, and we'll have sort of a second round. We'll sort of repeat it in two parts.
You could do that. You could also, you could also make sure you widely disseminate the information that it's really going to kick in and really start at 7. There'll be comment taken at 5 for those who can't come back, but you can, if you can, if you could, you know, put out on your website or...
If it's, if it's okay.
I'm just thinking, since there has been publicity and things like that, and some people might not be able to make it.
If it's all right, if it works for everybody, what I'd like to do is just sort of have two sessions, starting at one at 5 and one at 7, and basically identical sessions, if that's okay.
Well, I think you can do that, but that, just, I think I would reconsider just doing a very short overview at 5, taking a break, because, sort of shorter overview, allow people like John and others who can't come later to make some comments, but really start at 7. And I think I would just take this away as a message for, most people are not available at 5, so when we do these kind of workshops, if we're not doing them on the weekend, let's try to start them around 7 to accommodate most people's schedules. That'll be good.
I'm assuming that we'll be recorded, or...
I don't think we made that determination yet.
You mean, online streamed or just recorded?
CMC, I'm doing what they do.
If you'd like to, we can. I don't think we were really, we haven't really thought about it.
Why don't we do that, given that we have so much interest in this, and then we could also have it on our website for folks who aren't able to attend at all? Let's do it. I think that'll really help us.
I think it helps democracy always when it's in the public eye.
Right, and just one other note, for anyone that can't make it either at 5 or at 7, the notice articulated that they're welcome to send emails or letters with any comments.
Great, well, thank you for making that change. Thanks for bringing that up. One other comment is, some of you may recall that at the last meeting, I was empowered to send a letter to the PUC asking them to find four communities like ours that have a moratorium on smart meters. Well, the PUC made their decision, which did not find in our favor. So at the February meeting, I'll probably have an agenda item, potentially have a letter to PG&E asking them to work with us on possible options for moving forward at a slower pace, maybe taking us off their radar screen, but we'll have, bring this back in February. So we'll see what we can do to try to stay within the moratorium, but PUC has made this decision, and I'm not sure that we should hold out a lot of hope, but we will try. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. Oh, I turned myself off. All right, well, let's move on to the meat of the agenda, the interview process for candidates to fill the vacant council member seat, either selecting a candidate or deferring the decision to the next council meeting for the vacant council seat that was occupied by Larry Bragman for so many years. And I think I will open this up to the staff report. Garrett, would you like to go forward?
Great, thank you, Miss, Madam Mayor. And so as you indicated, that in December 3rd, the council decided to pretty much open up the vacancy and accept applications for the vacant position on the council. We actually initially received six applicants. Two have been withdrawn, so tonight you'll be interviewing four candidates for the council position. We have let each candidate know per the council-proved process that there's 10 minutes for them to make their presentation, and that includes question and answers within that. And then after each of the applicants speak, what the council's process is, the council then would select its top two candidates, and based on that, we would keep a tally of who the top two are, then you would decide who the finalists are, and then decide who's going to come in, and then you have your second round of interviews. But for the first round of interviews, what we'd do is the order would be selected by the town clerk, drawing names out of a hat. What we recommend is while it's voluntary, we ask all the applicants not being interviewed to wait outside the room just as a courtesy, and then they'll be called in for their turn, and then when everybody's done, then we recommend everybody comes back in. At that time, the council then might want to take public comment after the first round, then have your second round, then take public comment, and as you indicated, at that time, then you could decide to select a candidate or defer it to the next meeting. One thing to keep in mind is, the next meeting, we had talked about tentative date of January 28th. On January 28th, the council does have its Marin County mayors and council members meeting, that's at 7:00 PM. So if you did have that special meeting to select a candidate, you probably, you're either going to want to hold it earlier, if you'd like to go to MCCMC, or pick another date. But I don't think you have to decide that right the second. What we're recommending is go ahead and connect round one and two, and then you could decide what you'd like to do after that.
Can I just add one thing? So because the staff report wasn't completely clear on this, and you touched on it, what we will do is interview all four candidates. Two have dropped out, Lou Tremaine and Jody Timm, so we have Bruce Ackerman, Peter Lacks, Cindy Swift, and Taylor Watts will be applying. We'll go through separate interviews for each one, and please remember, you don't have 10 minutes. You probably have more, in the order of six to seven minutes to do your presentation, because we will ask questions. And then after that, we'll bring everyone back, and I would like to do public comment at that time, before we make any deliberations. And I think the other revision, I would say, is leave ourselves the flexibility of determining who the finalists are, but not doing those further questions at this meeting if we decide to go on to the second meeting. So people have time to step away and think more about the follow-up, but we'll see where we go. So other questions from the council? I'm sorry to interject first, I just wanted to make sure people were aware we would do public comment when we bring everyone back. So questions of the council?
I did have one comment. So I believe there was a slight lack of clarity in that it did, it did provide the information to applicants that you have 10 minutes. And then it did also say that would be for, for your presentation and for questions. I would, if you've prepared 10 minutes, and I know what that takes to prepare, I don't want you to feel as though you have to sort of cut and slash all over the place. So at least by my understanding, for the 10 minutes, just in case there's a confusion.
Well, I think I would just say, people should gear for, part of the responsibility as being a council member is having to cut and slash and make decisions at the last minute. So I think...
Trial by fire.
Having been one of these applicants in the past, I think, I think we should try to stick to staying with the 10 minutes total. It was clear that it said questions included. It's not clear how much time you got, but I think that's part of the potential job, is being able to think on your feet, and I know this is a little stressful, but we will get through this. Other questions of the council?
Yeah, I mean, I can comment that, in fact, the last, at the last go-around, there was an applicant who asked, you know, determined that in fact it was for the presentation and the questions, and determinately used up the 10 minutes as a presentation to avoid questions, which in itself says something. So, you know, it's all part of it, and yeah, I think it's, you know, sure, you have to be able to think on your feet and, and make your comments succinct, so that's part of
We will have folks draw from, it's not a hat, it's a can. You're giving them the names. You're drawing. Okay, thank you, Michelle. Someday I will get this.
Each of the four applicants who are here tonight, I have their name in this can, and I'm just going to pick my name out. I'm going to write it on that board over there, the flip chart, and then that will be the order that the interviews are held in.
And just one, just go ahead. One point of clarification is, before we start the 10-minute clock, I'll remind you of the three questions that yours, were asked to prepare for as far as your presentation. So maybe that'll give you a few seconds to clear your mind. I do see that the previous council member, Bragman, walked in. Does that mean you want to apply? So it looks like we have Bruce Ackerman up first. If the rest of you folks, Cindy and Taylor, wouldn't mind stepping out into the hallway, that would be great. So before we start the clock, Michelle, just a reminder, you have 10 minutes total, including our questions, but the, for the audience and folks at home, I just want to remind folks what issues we want you to cover. Is cite three top goals for the council and your reasons for considering them a high priority. Second, what program budget areas would you advocate be increased, and how would you fund these increases? And third, please give us more detail on what your vision is for the town of Fairfax. And with that, Bruce, welcome.
Thank you. First priority would be raising this microphone. I'll give you my other three now. So the, my three priorities that I would discuss would be climate change, resiliency, and community. So foremost, we need to do everything we can to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, just because, for one thing, we need to do our part, and for another thing, we can be an example. And I think Fairfax is often an example, and can make more movement in the world than just our own town. So try to imagine the world in 30 years. It's almost impossible to imagine seven generations, so let's just try 30 years. And imagine our children asking us what we were doing when we could have stepped up to this, and we could have made a change in, in what's happening to our planet. And of course, we might say that it was overwhelming, we might say that it was too global a problem, we might say that there were other people or other governments or corporations that weren't stepping up to the plate, and that just pissed us off. We could say a lot of different things, but ultimately, we need to get, we need to do this, and it actually is, is of benefit to us. We have, we have a lot of resources that are at our disposal. We have Marin Clean Energy, we have an incredible population in Fairfax and in the Bay Area generally, intelligent, well-educated, and with the ethics that we need to do it, and we have resources. So I would like to see our town become aware on a daily basis of what our, our footprint is, what our greenhouse gas emissions look like, how we're making progress on this, and then I'd like to see us be able to work hard and work joyously and work effectively to reduce them. Second, and related to that, very much related, is, is the town's need to be resilient. So as we, as we were working on the safety element of the general plan, in addition to the, the, this sort of standard for things that a safety element addresses, fire, flood, earthquake, and landslides, it, it seemed clear that we also had another threat in this time in history that's becoming at least as, as likely as the others, which was a loss of services, a disruption of services. So just as an example, if we were to discover one day that we can't get gasoline, then that would be pretty major for us. Or if we were to discover one day that even though we can get gasoline, we can't burn it, we just come to the realization full-on, full-stop that we cannot continue to burn this, which could happen. Some event could just force that realization on us. So these are things that, as we all age, we should prepare for. How, how is this going to look in our town? Try to make these a transition toward the world that we're moving into as orderly and as joyful and as positive as we can. The third goal, then, is one that you and the council have done so much for, and I thank you so profoundly, which is that, which is to preserve our beautiful democracy and the community spirit and the volunteerism that makes this town what it is. We have gotten through this year with that still intact, and I hope to continue to strengthen it. We also tied, tied closely with that, I think, are working toward improving and, and preserving the diversity of our community, so that residents are able to work here, workers are able to live here, and all of us are actually able to have time to be involved, which is difficult in this time and difficult when you're economically stressed. As far as having access to the political process, it really doesn't get much better than it is in Fairfax. If it were like this on the national level, we would be living in a completely different world. But we, and we do indeed need to sometimes speak truth to power, but most of the time, what I think is the preferable thing to do is to organize ourselves around positive things that we can build together. That actually builds the community, and it brings more people out. I've been surprised at how many people have said to me, as I've contemplated being here tonight, that, that they don't understand why anybody would want to put themselves in the position of being on the council. And that just, it shouldn't be. It should be something that we all want to participate in and, and appreciate. As far as funding for those three priorities, I think the, the third one is, kind of goes with the territory, and the first two I would see mostly funded through outside sources, either foundations or charitable giving, or grants, government grants, and also with the energy of our community members. I do think that one thing we can do to extend the staff time to be able to do more good work is to try to look for interns. I think that, that might work to, to help us all to get more done. So my vision for this town is inspired a great deal by things that I see around, around the world that are going on that are very, very positive. There's an amazing little, small town in southern Germany that's a little smaller than Fairfax, and they produce 500% more energy than they use, and sell it back to the grid, and the whole town is doing well as a result of that. There's, there's a, Palo Alto is actually looking at a climate action plan that would call for them by 2050 to be completely off of fossil fuels and completely carbon-neutral. That's, that's ambitious. European companies, a lot of them are moving pretty rapidly towards freedom from fossil fuels or climate neutrality, whichever one they couched it in. And of course, they enjoy a fabulous public transportation system, which was unfortunately intentionally dismantled in this country, but we're in the process of rebuilding it, and that couldn't be more important. So I envision Fairfax taking its place in the, in this incredible world that we're living in, moving forward on a really positive future, and being bold as we do so. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll open it up to questions from the council. It looks like we've got about two and a half minutes for questions. John?
Um...
Were you, were you going to ask a question?
No, I don't want to.
I actually have a question.
You have one ready?
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
I'll work on...
So, first of all, thank you so much, Bruce, and you, you got me, my wheels turning, because I know that you are about, and I've read your, your paperwork, about bringing more people to the process, about bringing people in when they feel disenfranchised, about bringing people and the volunteer power of this community. What is one way that you, if you dove in tomorrow, what's the first thing that you would do to bring people to the table?
We actually were discussing similar things on last night's Climate Action Committee meeting. Uh...
meeting. Education and bringing, we are working on, through Sustainable Fairfax's website, putting, putting information up to show, this is just an example of what we're doing, but in the Climate Action Committee, putting, putting information up so that people can see what we're up to, and then also just disseminating information about climate. Of course, we have a fundamental idea of the greenhouse gas meter that's in our programs and in the Climate Action Plan, so that would be an educational thing. It's actually not just a meter, it would be something that has a lot of information on it, kind of similar to what MSEP is doing for the county as a whole. So those are, in the time allowed, I'll leave it at that.
Others have questions?
Okay. All right, well, I'll raise the third rail. I mean, there's, there's a lot of talk about, you know, how we're going to decrease our climate footprint, and our housing element is one of the major things that we've been dealing with over the last year. How do you see Fairfax's efforts fitting into the regional efforts to reduce climate change through building programs?
Well, as far as regional efforts, I assume you're asking about how we deal with A-BAG, but the, as far as climate, the notion of transit-oriented development, which simply means people can live close to where there's transit, that, of course, assumes there is transit, so they closely are coupled with really building transit, which we need to do, and I know that's difficult, but I do believe that it will happen. I believe that that's the way history is moving, and we need to keep ourselves oriented to where, when it does happen, it's, we're there. I don't think we have too much more time, but that's one of the most fundamental, and then also just people being able to work where they live, live where they work. That's the whole, that's the whole notion, so.
Well, thank you very much, Bruce, and maybe when you go out, you could mention to Peter that he's up next. Thank you, Bruce. So, Peter, before we get started, I'll reread, well, a couple things, just a reminder, so you have less than 10 minutes, because you want to leave time for our questions, but I will reread the three items that we wanted you to cover. Cite the three top goals for the council and your reasons for considering them a high priority. Second, what program budget areas would you advocate be increased and how would you fund these increases? And the third is, please give us more detail on your vision for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for considering my application. Just want to talk a little bit about my background. I grew up in Southern California, lived in Roanoke County, lived in Los Angeles, I've lived in a variety of different environments, small towns, large towns. I came to the Bay Area to come to law school from a background in community organizing around environmental issues, anti-nuclear issues. Found a home very quickly in Ross Valley, came up here with my wife and our daughter, and really loved the place, fell in love with San and Selma and Fairfax. I've lived in Fairfax now for about 15 years, and I think that also my career choice as an attorney, I think, has also brought me to where I am today.
Peter, so I don't want to interrupt you, but we really want to get to those three questions.
Okay, very well.
That's what we're trying to ask everybody, so we can rate people the same way.
Sure.
Thank you.
As I said in, in my application, I think the, the biggest goals that we face as a town council are maintaining public services in light of tight budgets and all kinds of challenges that we face. It's not, excuse me, it's not the...
Top three goals are, and then move on to the detail.
Okay. And then, in addition to, I think, one of the most important things, too, is to try to maintain our environmental quality in Fairfax. And related to that, I think our transportation issues, and additionally, I think that... I think another very important area is disaster preparedness. We do face a number of challenges, both from fire and from flood, and I think that the town needs to really try to help the town prepare as a community to face those challenges. And with respect to program areas that I would like to see increased, I think what makes Fairfax unique are the, sort of the amenities that we provide as a community to our community members, particularly the Fairfax Open Circle Arts and Sports. I think that's a great, great program. I'd love to see that increased. I would love to see more funding for open space. I would love to see the Fairfax Pavilion utilized in a, in a larger way. I think it's an underutilized resource. I'd like to see more development in the area of promoting zero waste. I think the town's doing a good job in that area. But I think these, these are areas where we could, I think, increase our budget for the benefit of the town. Things like police and fire are somewhat constrained by, by the budget, but those are the areas that I've discussed, I think, are areas that are somewhat discretionary that I think we could, I'd like to see something, those areas increased.
Did you want to give us more detail on your vision for Fairfax?
Yes, I, I see Fairfax, what I would like to see is a little bit of a more infrastructure for public transportation, for bicycling, for pedestrian uses, integrating with regional transportation. I'd like to see the town maintain its, its small town charm and its environmental quality. I think that one of the things that also makes Fairfax unique is our cultural resources, our music and art and literary resources. I'd like to see if we can somehow expand and cultivate the culture that is here, because I think that's a very special and unique part of Fairfax. I would like to see improvements in energy efficiency, which I think the town may be able to help residents. I'm excited that PACE funding is now available, the property tax assessments that are available now for individual homeowners to take out loans to make energy improvements, water efficiency improvements, things like that. And I think that Fairfax could become a leader in helping to, helping residents to implement these kinds of changes, and I think the town, too, should continue to do what it's doing in terms of its, its own efforts for, towards energy efficiency.
For questions, members of the council?
Does someone have one to prepare?
I'll go for the similar one to the last time. It's kind of the third rail of Fairfax, but why not jump into it? There's been a lot of talk over the last year of different approaches towards, the state has, you know, dictated a certain number of housing units that, you know, Fairfax needs to arrive at. How would your approach differ from other things that you've heard, or would it be similar to different pains? You want to talk about that?
Sure. I, I think the, a careful approach is warranted. I think there's been a lot of hyperbole on both sides of the issue and some misunderstanding. I think that we do face some very real constraints with HCD, you know, and meeting certain housing goals and certain housing numbers. I think in some ways, we're in good shape, we're in better shape than we thought we were a year ago. And I think ultimately that affordable housing really will get built in Fairfax through either some kind of subsidized or nonprofit housing initiatives. I think a good approach for Fairfax is to try to encourage opportunities for that. And I think we may be in good shape. There are a few projects that are being discussed now that may bring us within those goals. And I would, it's a nuanced issue. I think it's good to go slowly and carefully, to not necessarily change our zoning precipitously, and to really look at opportunities for nonprofit housing as much as possible as a way to meet that. I also think that we should do a housing inventory and see exactly where we are in terms of affordable housing, and I don't know that that's been done.
I, oh, go ahead. Just a question. So you mentioned that you'd like to increase focus, one of the amenities, more funding for open space, I guess more funding for the pavilion. How would you fund these increases?
That's, that's difficult. We...
That's your job.
Yes.
So how would you fund these increases? What kind of ideas do you have to throw that out?
One idea, I think, for open space might be perhaps a property transfer tax, a modest one, on people purchasing new homes that would be borne by people coming into the town. I think that could be one, one source. And I, I do support the various measures that have, for the various tax initiatives that the town has also voted to support. And I think it's also important to look for grants and funding, nonprofit funding, and also through various arts programs and, and state, state programs that might be available.
Thank you. Minnie, did you have a question, or do we have time?
Yeah.
Oh, no, we don't have time.
I'll ask you later.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Could you tell Cindy that she can come in, please? Thank you, Peter. So, welcome, Cindy. Before you get started, before we start the timer, I'm going to remind you that you have a total of 10 minutes. I guess Bruce wanted the thing to be higher, you wanted it a little lower.
A little bit.
So you have a total of 10 minutes, which includes our questions, so gauge your responses that way. And I'll just remind folks the three major areas we'd like you to cover is cite three top goals for the council and your reasons for considering them a high priority, and what program budget areas would you advocate be increased, and how would you fund these increases? And please give us more detail on what your vision is for the town of Fairfax. Thank you.
So my first goal for the council is to restart our disaster preparedness and response effort. Fairfax has the big three natural disaster threats, wildfire, earthquakes, and floods. We are also heightened risk because of our topography and our roads, many of which are narrow and are, serve as one-way in and out of the neighborhoods. We have lagged behind the rest of the county as far as preparedness, education, and response. The town has an emergency management plan that was last published in 2006, and a citizens' disaster council that has not met for many years. Nor does the town's website provide much information for community preparedness at this time. The goal should be a priority for the council and the town. I would like to see the town revive the disaster council and its membership should represent both town and community representatives that would be key in preparedness and response. We need to identify our current CERT members and increase that team membership so that we have CERT members throughout the community to support in disaster preparedness and response. We need to provide disaster preparedness information and education to all facets of our community, including our citizens, our business community, and our community organizations, so we are better positioned in our disaster resiliency. This is also in sync with our general plan's safety element. I see this goal as having two phases. The first would be to get our community to a good level of preparedness, and then the second phase would be a continuous effort to sustain that level. There is a small disaster preparedness and EOC budget in the town's budget. I don't know what the funding needs would be at this time to get us to a good level of preparedness, but needed funding could come from grants, partnerships, and from within our budget. A San Rafael neighborhood was recently successful in getting a local grant to fund some of their disaster preparedness efforts. I believe strongly and live in, within our budget, and feel that there is an ability within our budget to reallocate for this high priority. We've been lucky the last several years in the sense that we haven't had emergencies, but last month's storms are a small reminder of the threats we could face. My second goal for the council is to increase town government, community, communication. The town's vision statement states that we pride ourselves in being a socially, economically, and politically diverse community that values civic engagement by all its residents and encourages its residents to be actively engaged in all facets of community life. Less than 2% of our residents get notifications of council and planning meetings, and less than 1% of the population fill town advisory positions. Many people in the community are not informed. I think what happened this last year is reflective of that. The council needs to look at additional ways of providing timely information to the community in ways people want to receive it and in ways that are easy for them to understand. Other communities have had this challenge and are using tools now, such as newsletters and e-notification software, which allows the public to identify topics and areas of interest, and then get timely information on those topics, which can range anywhere from meeting agendas, public works projects, park maintenance issues, community activities, police and fire department news, disaster preparedness, and the like. This is a challenge for a small town, but I feel it's important to make these outreach efforts in order to engage all members of our diverse community, and if successful, should result in a better-informed community to address our future challenges. My third goal is to continue to maintain our infrastructure, maintaining and improving our municipal services, such as our roads and bridges and lighting, and provide safety services or basic services our residents expect from the town. While this is my third goal, it should always be a goal and a priority for the council, as well as it will be a challenge, as maintaining our infrastructure is costly. As I said, I feel strongly that we must live within our budget. Before I filled out an application for the council vacancy, I talked to many residents living in different parts of the community. I think my goals reflect some of the feedback I got from those conversations. I heard concerns about disaster preparedness, lack of sufficient communication and information and cost. One individual that I contacted before replying back to me asked several of her friends and neighbors for feedback as well, and she got the additional concerns about the amount of taxes that people are now paying for the variety of measures that we see coming up before the voters. My vision for Fairfax is that we continue My vision for Fairfax is that we continue to preserve our unique small-town qualities that have been the reason many of us have moved here. We are a small town in size and character and need to maintain both. We need to continue to preserve and support our business community and work to preserve our open space. My vision for Fairfax also includes a transparent and informative government in which all members of the community, young, the old, new residents, the residents that have been here a long time, with differing views and points -- with differing values and points of view can feel a part of the process. And lastly, my vision includes preserving our history of an independent and local control spirit, which at times in Fairfax's history has made us question authority and the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of the council? Renee?
I have a question. So I so appreciate all of the points that you made, and I -- what stood out for me is this, obviously, the idea of informing people, getting people involved, the low percentages of people who actually participate. In the list of potential things that we could have a town forum about, what would you consider a priority? Anything?
As far as communication or just in general?
No, in terms of, I'm trying to ascertain the priorities that you feel as we bring the public to the table, so it's not about necessarily communication.
Okay.
But what should we gather about?
I think disaster preparedness. Without disaster, you know, adequate disaster preparedness, if we face a threat, some of the other things the town does now have less meaning because the threat's going to overtake what we do on a day-to-day basis. So I think the disaster preparedness is a number-one priority at this point.
I have a question. On that point, we hear a lot about disaster preparedness, but heaven forbid something bad happens and we're in a dire straits, say a tremendous fire, earthquake, flood -- not a flood, an earthquake or a fire. Any thoughts on post-disaster rebuilding? Because you seem to have given a lot of thought to this concept pre-disaster. Have you given concomitant thought to post-disaster reconstruction?
I haven't as much. I think I'm focused more, I've been focused more on preparing us for those times. Post-disaster is going to depend on what occurred and the level of that disaster. But I think if we have a better-prepared community, then what we face after that may be lessened.
I have a question. So one of the areas was what program budget areas would you advocate be increased, and how would you fund these increases? And I heard you say a number of times that we should live within our budget. So my sense of that is that if I heard you correctly, that you wouldn't increase any budget areas, that you would find a way to do it within the existing budget. Did I hear you correctly?
Well, I think by increasing budget areas, for example, the budget fund for disaster preparedness in your EOC, okay? So I would increase that.
And how would you fund it?
If I needed to, and then depending on what the items were and what, you know, the plan was to move us to that level of preparedness, that could be funded through the grants, that could be funded through partnerships. But within our budget, I think, within the budget, there are line items in the different departments that could be looked at for taking some of that and transferring it to the disaster preparedness, for example.
Okay.
If that becomes, you know, seen as a priority for the community.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay, we've got 24 seconds. John?
All right. Well, I've asked this of other people, too, so I might as well bring up a chance for you to talk about it. What about housing requirements from the state? How would you deal with that?
We have a few more than seven seconds.
Yeah.
So do the best you can.
I think we need to look at opportunities for housing within our community, within our small Fairfax community, and in what we see as unique for Fairfax, its quality, to house people in our community that are most at need, such as our seniors.
Well, thank you, Cindy. And would you let Taylor know that she can come in? Thank you. Before you get started, before we start the 10-minute clock, I will just remind you that you have a total of 10 minutes, including our questions, so plan accordingly. But also, I want to read out the three items that we'd like each person to cover. It's probably getting repetitive for people in the room, but I think it helps us reinforce. So we'd like to -- you to cite the three top goals for the council and your reasons for considering them a high priority. What program budget areas would you advocate be increased, and how would you fund these increases? And also give us more detail on your vision for Fairfax. So with that, we'll get started. Thank you.
Is this doing okay? That's all right? Okay. So I just want to say that my responses are intentional and directed to the board as well as the community and those watching from home. For those who do not know, I've worked for the benefit of Marin County for about 12 years. I ran Marin General Hospital Foundation during its transition, as well as the hospital transition.
Taylor, I don't want to interrupt you, but I did this to a previous person.
Yes.
We're trying to kind of rate people based on their responses, not necessarily their background.
Okay.
And everyone's resumes and applications are in the packet.
Okay.
So most people have read those.
Oh, okay.
So if we could get started.
I didn't know that. Okay, thank you. All right. So first, I'd like to frame for Fairfax where we are in the larger picture and address one of our key challenges, our aging community. The -- a significant number of leaders has or is retiring from their volunteer posts. This is also a national challenge. Jody Timms has been reporting on the town of Fairfax, reporting to the town of Fairfax for years on the status of our demographics and impacts and the county programs that are available. My skill sets include building great boards and committees. I would ask the best of Fairfax to come forward, to consider giving your best to this extraordinary place and community because it will come back to you. That is the gift of community organizing. If you are influential and/or have capacity, are a CPA or a planner, let the town know. The toughest question on the list is which area would you choose to fund and how would you go about it? It would take me some time to identify our most pressing needs. One thing I've learned working in the county is the misperception about how fundraising happens. Development of policy and programs go hand in hand with fundraising because dynamic, effective programs and services draw funding. I will share how the cycle of funding happens. Those who work in philanthropy and development look to county and state and national reports, read the newspaper, meet with friends and neighbors, keeping a watchful eye out for advocacy. They identify needs from advocates and program managers through conversations, grant requests, and reports. The county and Marin Community Foundation have been identifying needs for the county for years. The development of programs and policy are a response to those needs. Effective communication about the programs are required to move forward to fundraising. Effective fundraising and development also require tools and resources. We have extraordinary resources and need to sharpen our tools. Developing these tools and resources is our collective agenda. Further on framing for Fairfax, I read in the paper that Jared Huffman has just been named to a key post. The second district goes from Marin all the way up to the Oregon border and includes all of the Northern California coastline and some inland areas. Huffman has been named to the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, an authorizing committee that decides how much funding ongoing government programs will receive. You can read in the article that David McCune said Huffman's appointment to the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure is huge for helping his district. So it's important for us to keep pace with all of the things that are happening in our county, state, and federal government. We need to take particular care with our watershed as we are part of the Ross Valley and are inextricably connected. There are those community members who have devoted years to mitigation and maintenance of one of our most prized pieces of real estate. An editorial in today's IJ from Noel Robertson and Barbara Baguany describes the decimation of one of the recently constructed give-a-book, take-a-book, mean -- many neighborhood libraries. These are one-foot-square boxes that have been carefully designed to promote neighborhood engagement and the importance of reading. Let's take a page from Belinas and respect the creativity, freedom of expression, and gifts of others. I'd like to see an era of civic leadership, solid reporting, acknowledgement of love in our daily lives, and a truer understanding of karma and the relationships to the world around us. I want to thank the board and the mayor for your continued work in supporting and benefiting our town. And just so you're aware, I won't take it personally if I'm not chosen for this seat. I'm not in the business of judging. Many thanks to you.
Taylor, did you want to talk about, I don't know how much, you have a little over five minutes.
Sure.
You mentioned the aging community as being one of your goals. I'm not sure if you touched on the other goals or kind of compiled it all into your vision, but you also may want to touch on what budget areas you think we should increase and how you would pay for those. So you may want to just be clear on what those top three goals were, and then maybe the budget thing quickly.
I can elaborate on, so on the budget, yeah, I've taken a look at the budget and my response is, says I think we need to, I would, I would wish to spend some time assessing the needs before I would make a determination on what the top three are. I would think that the overall finances of the town would be one, you know, to, that would be just a goal for, you know, more income to come in so that we have more to play with. So, you know, another key area is...
Excuse me. Could folks please put their phones off or on silent, or take them out of the room? Sorry, Taylor.
Oh, no problem.
We'll give you a little extra.
So, yes, and so I was identifying the areas that, of how I would go about that funding. So, and first, it would be a needs assessment, nothing, you know, challenging. It would just take some time to figure out what the top, top three are. But I would say the top would be bringing, bringing in more money for the overall budget.
Questions of Taylor? Thank you.
Hi. What would you consider to be the most important role that a council member plays?
I would say probably public relations.
I just might ask you also to say, one, you talked about assessing the needs of where funding would, should be increased. Do you have an idea on how you would increase funding, just in general?
There are, what, I mean, ideally, what I would like, what I would, I would figure out is, is, it's hard to answer that question not knowing more detail about how, the inner workings of finance and, and the budget. So, but I would say, in my, my past experience, I've brought together people who are highly qualified professionals to assess and look at the overall areas and see what possibilities there are. So that's the, that's actually the skill set that I bring, is identifying people who, who are amazing board members, who would be willing to put their efforts into donating their time to the town, to identify the best ways for us to bring more money in so that we have long-term, a long-term future for the town. And I have other specifics that I can go into any time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I think with that...
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. I didn't see you.
Might as well. Oh, no, it's fine. And we've got a couple of minute and a half, anyway. And I've asked similar things to other contestants or, whatever. As long as there's not a door to pick from. There's been a lot of talk in the town about housing the last year or so, and, you know, as you know, we, the state has various different requirements, and there's different ways of solving those. How would you do it?
Can you be a little more specific about which, how would I do what part?
How would you, what, how would you approach some of the requirements that the state has in terms of RENA numbers and looking at how those would go about?
Relate to us?
Yes.
And how to disseminate that information, or...
So how to implement those kinds of things? And maybe this is not an area of you've really focused on, so if you don't feel comfortable...
Certainly, yeah, yeah. Policy's definitely the area that would require, that, that there's a learning curve, for I guess what I would want to say is that, you know, I believe in an inalienable right for fair, fair and affordable housing. So that's just the baseline. And, you know, understanding our requirements isn't all that challenging. I mean, it's very clear, and, so I'm not sure, I, I mean, I, I mean, our...
How would you make that work for Fairfax?
How would I make it work for Fairfax? Let's see. I'd probably, well, it's just explaining to people the status of, of the requirements. It's disseminating information. I think that that's been a real problem locally and California-wide. And quelling people's fears about the requirements and understanding the positives that come from those requirements, because we don't actually choose to create policy that's negative to our communities. That's not a goal of civic life. So, you know, that, that, that's the baseline.
Thank you very much, Taylor. I'm hoping that everybody else is kind of sitting out there. If you can let people know, we can come back in. And we will take public comment now. But I might ask, just for myself, if we could take a quick five-minute break and get everybody back in the room? So before we get started with public comment, I just want to see if all our applicants are in the room. Bruce? Do I see, oh, there's Bruce. Okay. Taylor, Cindy, and Peter. I just want to say, before we get started with public comment, I realize this is a stressful process. It's not the most pleasant. I want to say we have an embarrassment of riches. We're very lucky to have so many people willing to participate and potentially commit a lot of time. So we do appreciate everyone being willing to apply and, and go through those kind of round of fire, as we say. So with that, we will get started with, boy, I'm having a little trouble, public comment. And Sierra, you're up.
I feel like chewing on anything, something. Does anybody have like a chew toy or a biscuit or anything? I don't know why. More commentary and questions for anybody on the council, anybody thinking about being on the council. And that is, I've got a few words to band you about, it's like inclusiveness, adversity, diversity, leadership, conflict, you know, how to deal with all that. Neighbor... how to deal with all that? Neighbors, what would you do, or what would you suggest? Fairfax has a fair amount of adversity and conflict and interesting. We don't go along with mandates from the state or whoever that just say, do this. We think about them, we consider them. Fairfax isn't just local Fairfax in terms of interest. I think we have, we look at global issues, and we look at local issues. And there are some people that think, why are we even thinking about global issues? Only deal with the nuts and bolts and the finances and whatever that's right here in front of us, and we've got nothing to do with the rest of the world. And I think Fairfax has a lot of people that consider how we do business and what we do having an effect in the rest of the world and it being kind of our business. So my question to everybody interested in being on the council is, how do you see your role, and how do you fit in, and what are you going to do when the conflict arises? Are you just going to agree with whatever we're supposed to do, or are you going to stand up for what you think is right, and what the community might think is right, regardless of, regardless of the conflict or the adversity, or, you know, what people, and it's all a dance. And how we get to good decision-making publicly is through everybody's input, good, bad, and indifferent, and a lot of it's uncomfortable. But I think we get a better product in the long run for having the discussions and going through the discomfort. So basically, my question is, how to deal with the conflict, and where are you going to be on leadership for issues that maybe aren't popular, and maybe aren't easy, and maybe aren't in, you know, alignment with, you know, the empire, whatever it is. It's like, you know, are we going to, whatever, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sierra. Mark, and if folks are okay with stating their name and where they live, you don't have to, but it would be great if you did. Thank you, Mark.
Mark Squire, Frustick Road in Fairfax. And just to let Sierra know, those guys are already on the council, Sierra. You don't have to interview them.
Well, they're not currently scheduled to be interviewed.
Sorry. I wanted to just give an endorsement to Peter Lacks. You know, I've known Peter for over 10 years. You know, I can say that he loves the town deeply. You know, he has a really sharp mind. I think you guys, you know, you need that up there with all the issues that you're digesting all the time. You know, he has a huge amount of integrity. I think he's one of those people that will really connect different segments of our community, and that's an important thing. So I just wanted to say a good word for him. I think he'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
So my name is Elon Rosenfeld, and I'm a longtime resident and also spend a lot of time volunteering. And I'm here to say a few words in support for Peter Lacks as well. And I've known Peter for over 10 years, as a friend, as a planning commissioner, as a member of the tree committee, a surfer, musician, a lawyer. I mean, he served on the planning commission. He's worked really hard, attention to detail. He understands what it means to work on a town committee. He had shown a lot of concern for his fellow citizens while being on the planning commission. Peter's a surfer as well, so he has a real appreciation of the beautiful place we live in and understanding the issues that affect all of that. He's also a musician who plays a lot here in town, which gives him a real connection to some of the, sort of, soul of this town. He has some awareness of what the town vibrant base is all about, which I think is really important. As a council member, you need to have a sense of the whole town and not just segments. And by, you know, being immersed in the town as he is, I think he's really in touch with that. He's smart, analytical, has integrity and values, commitment to hard work, able to hear many viewpoints, concerned and connected to Fairfax and its citizens. And I think he'd be a great choice for appointment for the town council. Thanks.
Thank you. Nicola, welcome.
Yes, hello. Man, cool hat. That was just like the coolest hat. But I also want to urge you to appoint Peter. I think that Peter is the person for the job. A lot of times, people get on the council and they don't really have the personality to do the job, to work together. But I think that having been on the council, it's really important to be open-minded, to be able to work with other people and be creative in how you deal with your own background and emotions and the problems that face people. Also, I think that one of our biggest problems are jobs, that we have people who are coming into the town, and most of the people, if you go around the town during the day, during the week, most people have gone to San Francisco or somewhere else. So we don't have the jobs here. On the other hand, this push for growth is a problem, because eventually, we won't be a small town. We'll be a big town, right, the more units we add. So we get more problems. And I think that, I didn't hear anyone talk about parking or traffic, which is really a significant problem anytime anyone tries to leave the town. And I think that also, someone mentioned Germany, and my research in Germany is focused on, as well as in Turkey, is focused on the town, mainly the countryside, and how the towns are being depopulated. People are moving to bigger cities, whether it's Munich, or Berlin, or Istanbul. And it is true that Germany's becoming more energy efficient, but the problem there is that the jobs are nowhere where, you know, you would think that small towns would prosper. So I think that we have to focus on a lot of things. Thirty years ago, everyone was talking about working from home. Now, Google buses and Yahoo buses are clogging the streets. And the problem here is that our mega-cities are growing tremendously, and they're huge energy sinks. So what we have to do in a small town is really think about the small town, how the town can survive in the 21st century, and how we can use technology. I just read that Microsoft built a huge factory in Wyoming, and it uses fuel cell being powered by the local sanitary district's sludge. So, you know, it's entirely energy efficient and zero carbon footprint. We have to be able to be creative, innovative, and I think respect each other. That was a good point also. And I think that the town, the best way of dealing with the town's problems are when people are interested in talking to other people and not closing off themselves. And so are really interested in going door to door, just to learn what your neighbors are really interested in doing. So I think that Peter's the best person for that, that position now. Thanks.
Thank you, Nicola. Ted?
Council members, good evening. Ted Pugh, Roga Drive. In looking at this process, I just took a couple little notes and just wanted to express those for the candidate who will be selected. And I wanted to point out, at this time and place in the town's history, I think there's certain characteristics that might really stand out with the candidate. One, objectivity, that is, no agendas. Someone who has the ability to look at both sides of an issue and objectively make the case for what decision they decide to make, and they make a decision. Collaboration, someone who is collaborative, who's demonstrated they've been collaborative in other activities around the town. So it's easy to figure that one out just by asking some questions and looking at past performance. Devotion to doing the right thing, that's going to come out clearly in this decision. Knowledge, I think it would be really interesting to see, kind of like a technician, as a member of this council. We'll get to that in a moment. And so the vote goes for me, to Bruce Ackerman. The reason I believe Bruce Ackerman has these characteristics is because, at least from my own personal point of view, I've worked very closely with Bruce. And although I haven't lived in town anywhere near as long as Bruce has, I certainly have seen the outcome of the work he's done over the years. And every one of these characteristics all point to my decision. This is the man at this time and this place. So I hope you all unanimously vote for Bruce. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Next.
Hi, my name is Elliot Rosenfeld. I have lived in Fairfax since I was one years old. I'm now 25. I first wanted to just thank you for your service on the Fairfax Town Council and all your hard work, because I know it's a pretty revolutionary and reputable town council. I am here to voice my support for Peter, and I will be brief. I've known Peter for about 12 years, as a friend, through my family. I haven't worked with him as an attorney, but I've known him as an attorney. And I've just been really struck by his character, his compassion, his critical thinking. And he's really struck me as someone who does a due diligence on pretty much everything. He's really knowledgeable. He's really calm and reasonable. I think that his experience in his profession and outside of his profession, he has a family of like eight or nine siblings, which is probably chaotic, has really given him a sense of being able to be competent and reasonable and really methodical in important deliberations. I also am struck by his objectivity. I'm sorry, I'm not used to public speaking.
You're doing a great job.
Thanks. And I briefly was Peter's tenant for several months. I'm actually just transitioning out of that, just because I'm living with a friend, and I've noticed that he has solar housing. He actually contemplates and talks about schemes for solar designs, because he's so interested in the field and environmental causes and composting. And, yeah, I just think that he has a genuine love for this town that would be invaluable. So.
Thank you.
Pamela Meggs, 310 Cypress Drive. Well, let's see. I have known Peter for many years. We were planning commissioners together. You know, Peter and I have been through a lot on the planning commission. We started out on the general plan and worked various subcommittees. We were also together during the marijuana, medicinal marijuana. It was extremely difficult, and Peter stayed the course. A lot of integrity, a lot of strength, really, you know, great support for me during that time. So I only can say good things about Peter. You know, the other thing about Peter is a big love of community. Seeing also, he being involved with the Sierra Club, being the president of the Sierra Club, tells me where a lot of his values come from and how he would be on the council. So, and just, you know, always being available to help out, even keeled. And so I really think Peter is the best choice.
Thank you, Pam. Mimi?
Good evening, everybody. BB Newton, Mono Avenue. I, first off, want to just tell all four candidates how much I appreciate their willingness to step up and apply for this position, because it's a big deal. And I think it shows really remarkable personalities to be willing to step up here and do this with you guys. That being said, I think that Peter Lacks has the right personality, the right temperament, and the right experience for this position. You know, I think that you guys have done an incredible job over the last year of bringing the council together. I know there have been a lot of, you know, potential schisms that have arisen in this community. And I think it's really important to keep that working-together spirit going. And I think that, as everybody else has said who spoke on Peter's behalf before me, I think he's got the right personality. He's not, I think he exudes sort of careful thoughtfulness, and I think that's going to be really important for you guys in the coming years. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Hi, I'm Billie Appleton. I live at 125 Ridgeway Ave. And I, like Mimi, want to thank the candidates. It's really cool that people want to work for the town. And I know it's an enormous amount of work and reading and detail and conflict. And my hat's off to all you guys. And the fact that people want to do it is really great. So thank you all for wanting to do that. I do want to throw in a few words also for Peter Lacks. I've known him for a long time, and he's been in town for 15 years. And I, you know, it's half that time he's been on the planning commission. And I had a bunch of things to do with the planning commission when developments were happening in my neighborhood. And I really appreciated Peter's calm and thoughtfulness and consideration in really difficult, controversial issues. So I love that about him, that he's worked for our town for so long. And for me, development is a huge issue in the town. And the fact that Peter's been on the planning commission and understands how the development of the town works and what the machinations of that are, I think is really important. The other main issue for me in the town is our culture. And, you know, I always say that Fairfax has become kind of the music center of Marin. And I love that Peter's a musician, and I see him out there all the time, and he's involved, and he's connected to this really big part of our town. You know, the music here in town is part of our culture. It's also part of our economy. And it's just a big part of our identity. And I love the fact that Peter wears those hats of, you know, is a lawyer, and he's on the planning commission, and he's a musician. And I feel like he brings a great breadth of understanding in a lot of different realms. And that would be a big bonus on the council. So I hope you guys will favorably consider him. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Ed Bocci, Novi's Bar on Bolinas Road. And as a business owner, the newly installed bike rack on Broadway Street took away the parallel parking for the trucks to unload.
Excuse me, sir. We are not doing public expression at this point. We are taking comments on the people interviewing for the council. So we will be having public expression soon, but right now, we're dealing with this. So did you want to support one of the candidates?
Do what?
Did you want to offer support for one of the candidates for council? We're not on public expression.
No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll get to that hopefully very soon. Larry?
Hi. Larry Bragman, 30 Hickory Road. And I just wanted to weigh in, not so much for me, because I've known all the candidates, respect them all, you know, have worked with Peter, have worked with Bruce, certainly remember Taylor coming in for the Chevron station. So you've got really a good set of candidates, again. But I do support Peter. And, you know, when this last came to us a couple of years ago, I was actually very torn about how to vote, because I've worked with Peter for years in private practice. He's a great attorney. He really epitomizes the public service and representation of people for justice. And that's really how I know Peter. And I've talked to Peter about his candidacy, and, you know, I've expressed to him, I don't agree with everything that he put in his application. And I don't expect to agree with everybody about everything. But I do agree that he has the integrity, the analytical skills, the attention to detail that the council is really going to need in the coming months to deal with the housing element, to get that into some kind of shape that will not, again, create a division in the town. I think we learned from our experience how fragile the community is, and how it can really kind of falter if it's divided. And our strength is really working together towards a consensus. And any- And any accomplishments that I may have made are due in large part to my colleagues on the council and to the support in the community. Because we don't get anything done unless we can get a consensus on moving forward. And my feeling is, you know, right now, in order to keep the community moving forward, I think Peter would fill that role best. And I really think that's the most important thing for us right now as a town, is to keep ourselves together and just keep our eye on the prize. And I think he's got all the skills you'll need to help move forward in a good direction. And I'm sure there's going to be many more challenging things that come before the council. And I know he will be a positive and contributing voice up there if you choose him. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Madam Mayor, as members of the council, my name is Scott Huxstra. Sorry, I live at 141 Bolinas Road. I'm here to support the tallest guy of the four. And I think he's head above the other three. And I think Bruce Ackerman is the man that you ought to appoint to your council. And I think he ought to be appointed for three reasons. He's wicked smart, he's analytical, and he's heartfelt. And he thinks through very carefully and acts based on his compassion and his caring for the town. Thank you.
You, Scott. Other public comment on the candidates?
Good evening, council members. My name is Carl Deal. I'm at 156 Toyon. I'm not here to support any particular candidate, but I did want to reinforce what I thought was a very important thing that Mr. Bragman said, which is that the town in the next year or years is facing a potentially very, very divisive issue that, and I appreciate very much that Mr. Reed asked each of the candidates about it. We saw the potential for the divisiveness in Surprisewell in at least one meeting that I've been at. It is something we're going to have to live through. And so I would urge all of you in the second round, when you're down to your finalists, to really pay particular attention, not just to specifics or to visions, but to the capacity to navigate a potentially divisive issue in the best way possible to bring our town together and to meet the goals that we're required to meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray?
Ray Morris, 5 Pine Drive. I read their resumes on the website, and I think they are four very remarkable people. They each have different skills. And I would hope that the, well, I wish that you could take all four of them for their different skills. But you're going to have to choose one. But I hope, would hope that the council would recognize these skills in these four people who are so impressive to me and would ask them and elicit their help, all four of them, in helping the council achieve the goals of the council. Another thing is, I would hope that the council would select a person who has the courage and confidence to get more out of what we're already spending money on. The town spends a major portion of its budget, or a significant portion of its budget, on our emergency services. People are talking about how can we get emergency preparedness. We're already investing great sums in people who are emergency services. And our emergency services need to have a council that has the courage and confidence to guide them to the goal of putting themselves out of business. I mean, it's never going to happen. But the goal of our emergency services should be prevention. And they should be guided by the council and the administrators to recognize that even though they'll never achieve it, they should be working hard to put themselves out of business. And that is prevention.
Thank you, Ray. Other members of the public want to speak on behalf of applicant? Dottie?
Dottie Lemieux, 5 Pine Drive. I just want to speak on behalf of Peter Lacks. I think, I don't think I have anything other to say than you've already heard, except that I have known him for a long time. I'm an attorney, and I've worked with him in that capacity. I've seen him, work that he does with the planning commission and with the Sierra Club. And I've seen him work with situations and with people who have the potential to become explosive and difficult situations. And I think in the housing situation, Peter has the temperament and the knowledge and the skill set that will add to what you already have in being able to deal with that and making Fairfax a real model for dealing with our housing problems in a compassionate and realistic way. And so I would urge you to vote for Peter. Thanks.
Thank you, Dottie. Other members of the public want to speak up on behalf of the applicant? Okay, so with that, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period. And the council will now deliberate and choose the top two finalists. And then we'll discuss where we go from here, because it's getting a little late. We would like to move on to the rest of our agenda. But with that, I'll open it up to council deliberations to pick the top two finalists. David?
Yeah, just to ask how you would like us to proceed. Do you want us to just state the names? Or do you wish to have us explain the basis for our decision?
I think I will leave it up to each one of the council members. If, it will probably be helpful if you'd like to give your reasons for, but it's up to you if you prefer just to give the names. So whichever works for others. But if we want to have the ability to kind of learn from why you're choosing, I think it would be best to share why, so others can be thinking in that manner. So who would like to go first? I think our lovely Michelle is going to be keeping records. Let's not all speak up first. The mayor usually waits for the end. So someone step forward.
No, this is, fortunately, I got to go last time, maybe.
Why don't you go first, John? Since you were last last time, let's go first.
Okay. So somebody's got to do it. And nobody wants to do it, and I don't want to do it either. Yeah, it's difficult, because there's four good people. They all bring skills to it. And, you know, I know them. And it's, there's going to be three unhappy people at the end of this process. And, I'm sorry? Yeah, this job is not easy. And as, you know, and it's got a lot of different facets to it. And that's one of the things that makes it interesting. And it also, you know, makes it difficult, too. At the end of the day, yeah, some things are very easy to vote for, and it's usually unanimous at that point. And where it comes to making difficult decisions, that's difficult. I share with Cindy many of the disaster preparations and the belief in that. It's very easy to focus just on all the bad things that could happen and stuff like that. And yes, it's good to be ready. It's also good to focus on a lot of positive things that can grow out of a positive community such as Fairfax. I mean, it's a wonderful place to live and, you know, do voluntary stuff with, just because so many people have enthusiasm for the community. I've worked a lot with Bruce on the general plan. I think he has a lot of integrity. And I think he's very heartfelt, good. I mean, he does the right thing for the right reasons and is adamant about wanting to do it. And I also have known Peter for many years. And I've seen him sometimes pontificate a while, which is something that I can share. Actually, Bruce is also, you know, we all share that ability to talk for a while. And it's difficult to put things in a concise thing. So thanks for letting me go first, because I can go on for a while here. And allows everybody else to get their thoughts together.
At some point, we'll wrap it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Taylor, I've had the opportunity to have a few different conversations about different things, fundraising for the pavilion and different ideas that you've got there. And, you know, those are also very valuable. And I'm saying, you know, and you've said you won't be offended if people don't pick you. And you're nodding your head in agreement there. But there's a lot of ways that you can contribute to the town, too. There's a couple of pootings on the planning commission, for instance. And if you're wanting to see what it's all about, that's a good place to see what it's about and also contribute to the community. I mean, volunteer board and all kinds of, there's a lot of different places. And Parks and Rec has an opening also. Depends on what people are interested in. So that's a general pitch to the public listening to this. But and I guess I'm torn a little bit between Bruce and Peter. And and I think really what it comes down to is trying to balance out various opposing opinions, which is one of the most difficult things to do up here, is try to figure out a middle path that balances things out. And I think they're both capable of doing that. But if I was going to have to pick one or the other, I don't know. I guess I'd have to listen to my other council members, too, because it's a collaborative effort after all. But I think I might pick Peter over. Peter? Oh, well.
Let me, let me ask a clarification. So are we looking at potentially each one of us choosing two? My understanding was potentially we each choose one, and then from that, we pick the top two. Am I misunderstanding?
No, I could read it to you, but the processes.
I've read it. It's not totally crystal clear.
Last time, how it worked, each council member picked their top two.
Okay.
And then what we do is, the town clerk, Michelle, or Carol Merrill, if it's, let's make a deal, would then write your initial underneath each applicant.
Okay.
So at the end, you could see who's in the top two. And then you could decide if it's clear everyone picks the same top two, then you have two.
Okay.
Or you might have more, and you could.
Okay, great. So that means, John, you can choose two.
That's my choose-two. Those are my two choices.
So you're choosing Peter and Bruce as your top two. Who would like to go next? Vice Mayor Goddard would like to go.
You know, I have to say that I've been so busy listening to these candidates. I've been writing notes, copious notes, stealing ideas, listening to the rich. As you said, this is an embarrassment of riches. Because reading the applications, I felt really actually like this is an amazing reflection on our town right now. This is, this many people, this many qualified people bringing their own unique talents and experience to the town. It's a privilege to sit here and listen. And I actually have felt more nervous about coming in today than I did when, well, maybe not quite, but when we went through this almost two years ago. So I thank you, each of you, really, truly. And I have so much, I will say honestly, to learn from each of you and what you brought here today. And as Ray stated so eloquently, we would not like to let any of you go without begging your participation in the town as we go forward in some form. Each of you, I have things that I would consider. The things that you shared with us, I would consider also priorities of my own. Some priorities that I jumped in here, ready to absolutely tackle and make happen. And I've been slowed by some of the processes that be. And a couple of them that I look out there and I say, wow, you know, good, that would be an excellent partner on moving forward with something like that. I will say that there are two candidates, and these are the same two candidates which John brought forward, who will be very difficult to choose between. I think it's hard not to get stuck in thinking that that candidate is what they brought today to the podium to speak about. Because I know from the application and also from my experience with both of these gentlemen in the community, that you are both so much more. And it makes it even more difficult to choose. Your skills are unique to yourselves, obviously, but also very different. Both very useful to the council at this time and to us going forward, as many of the public commenters stated. I do have further questions for both of you. So I look forward to moving forward that way. But I, with all due respect and great gratitude for Taylor and Cindy in stepping forward, please don't disappear. But I would like to further have the opportunity to interview both Bruce and Peter. So thanks.
Thank you, Renee. So David, you're up next, because the mayor goes last.
Sure. I think unlike perhaps other members of the town council, certainly this council, I don't know any of these people. Other than the opportunity I've seen to listen to them tonight. Obviously, Peter was on the planning commission and Bruce through his general plan work. And I think Cindy has commented before the council on a number of occasions. Wisely, I might add. And so I'm going strictly off the paper that they provided, plus their presentation. And I was, I think, a little surprised by what I heard and why it informs my decision. I really found that when I was running for council a long time ago, that a lot of my focus was upon seeing the general plan completed. And I remain in the debt of my colleague, John, and Bruce, as I would say, the parents of the general plan and bringing it forward. And he would be my choice tonight for the council. But I must say, although I have heard, a couple of months ago, Peter gave a talk on the ADA at the Chamber of Commerce mixer. And I thought it was among the most lucid presentations of a difficult topic in the ability to explain to an anxious community the elements of a very difficult-to-understand law in very layman's terms, which is no small task for any attorney. It's a gift, and he has that certainly. And he's also an extremely good person. And I supported him strongly when he ran for the water board some years ago. And we're sorry, he did not prevail. But Cindy spoke exactly to three issues that were on my list when I ran for council. Public safety, disaster preparedness, outreach to the community and to do so in a creative way, and also budgeting to live within our means. And we have, we have learned how to budget within our means. We've learned how to raise taxes every couple of years to live within the means that we aspire to. And so I was taken by the fact that she has identified that as a goal that she would bring forward. And so my two choices would be first Bruce and then Cindy.
Okay, thank you, David. Thanks, everyone. So first, I want to say I know everyone who's applying. And I want to say, I first met Cindy when I was the chief inspector for elections at Manor School for something like seven years. And Cindy became one of the clerks in maybe the last three or four years. And immediately, I lit on Cindy as one of the most intelligent, great people to service an elections clerk. an elections clerk, and immediately picked her to help me drop off the important ballots at the end of the night. And so I got to know Cindy that way, and also through her work at the Fairfax Library. Cindy, as you could tell from her presentation tonight, is very interested in disaster preparedness. And so I've invited her to start coming to the countywide public disaster emergency preparedness meetings with me, and she's been able to come for a few of those meetings. In fact, attended one I wasn't able to attend. And just so you know, Cindy, later on in the agenda, we're going to talk about, on the consent calendar, in February, we're going to have a presentation. And as mayor, I am going to reactivate the disaster council. That's something that will come up next meeting in February, but we do have a little bit on emergency prep tonight. So I want to thank you for coming forward. I'll also say, I, I met Taylor more recently and heard her speak on the Chevron, proposed Chevron station, and I think what Taylor brings, just like Cindy bringing a very unique kind of area of expertise with disaster prep and work, is Taylor brings fundraising, and I want to just say to anybody who isn't ultimately selected, I really strongly urge you to look at the Planning Commission. We need community members on the Planning Commission, and we're really going to have two openings tonight. We will probably move forward and reappoint a couple of folks, but that's a really important area, and there's other committees if that does not kind of spark your interest, but it's a great way to really be involved in the town. I had the pleasure of serving on the Planning Commission myself, and it's a good sort of, you really get some very difficult issues. I will say that Bruce, I've had the pleasure of getting to know Bruce through the Climate Action Committee, and he's very devoted to climate action issues and lives in Breeze. He really stands by his word and really follows suit, so appreciate my working with Bruce. I will say, one of the things I think I heard Mr. Deal, Carl Deal, bring up was something about, not necessarily look at the specifics, but how to navigate some of the really difficult issues we have ahead. Maybe I'm not characterizing everything you said, but getting through, and Larry brought up some of the divisive issues we've had. Housing has been an area that really split the town for awhile, and I think we're, we're moving forward together again. My knowledge of working with Peter and knowing Peter, and he brings such a broad breadth of experience, and, and there were so many folks that stood up and talked about more than Peter was able to capture tonight, is just, you know, musician brings a whole other connection to the community, plus we already have a musician on the council, so maybe that's, instead of a bunch of attorneys, oh. Oh, we have that, too. But, we love attorneys, David. But, so Peter really brings a broad breadth of experience, and sitting on that Planning Commission for eight years, dealing with some of the very difficult issues that can, got pretty hairy, I know he brings that, as well as the Sierra Club and his love for environmental issues. So I will say, first of all, I completely appreciate everyone stepping forward. I know this isn't a pleasant process. But I also want to thank people who stood up in support of folks and really supported those folks and, you know, just supported those folks without any negative comments on other folks. There's no need to do that. Is that, I'm going to say Peter and Bruce are my top two candidates as well. So I think it's, Michelle, I think you'll tell us who the top two candidates are, but it probably doesn't take rocket science to do this.
Four for three, seven. Three for the last. They're the top two.
Okay. And then one for Cindy. So, so what I'd like to say, thank you. So we have two top candidates, Bruce and Peter, and I would say, I'm going to ask my colleagues on the council and that we continue asking further questions of the top two candidates until the meeting on the 28th, and then make the final selection at that meeting, so that we can move on to our regular agenda. I know we have people wanting to do public expression and get on to the rest of the agenda, so I would ask the council to entertain that concept.
We'll be doing it early because of the MC.
Yeah, and I would suggest that we really cannot pick another date at this point. I would suggest that we try to start at 4:30, no later than 4:30, so we have time to interview people, take comment, and leave by 6:30.
I, I will make a motion to.
Okay.
To continue this till the 28th of January at 4:30 PM, same place.
Okay.
I would second on the condition that the applicants can make that time.
Oh, good point.
Yes. So Bruce and Peter, please make yourself available, any pressing, and it would have to be something pretty big. Does it work? Okay, great. Bruce, it works for you? Okay, so, motion, Goddard, second. John?
Read.
And so we will continue, and just for the candidates, we are going to be asking you questions that you will not have beforehand. Garrett, how much time will they have to respond to those questions?
It's really up to the council, how much time you want to allocate.
Okay, but I think, because we've also heard that some folks pontificate, is really kind of think about the issues and try to give as concise as possible answers. Because I think also for the viewing audience, it really is helpful to hit the high points first, so that people can really hear you. So we'll start at 4:30. Garrett, you had a comment?
So, one comment is, in, in the adopted guidelines, it envisioned you'd have a second round that said 10 minutes, but then it thought you might defer it, but last time when you, last time we went through that process, I don't recall, it's actually, it'd be good, I guess my question is, did you want to set actual timelines so the applicants know?
I think we should, should we consider about 15 minutes total?
I think 15 minutes is probably pretty good.
For two candidates?
Yeah, 15 minutes each.
And in case we go a little bit over? But that doesn't mean, so that would mean we might ask you a total of four or five questions, so you're not going to have a lot of time to respond.
Wait a minute, if we're going to be here for two hours and we have two people, why don't we have half an hour with each and then deliberate for an hour?
All right.
I'm just thinking, what else are we going to do with the time?
Does that work? Okay, does that work? Okay, let's do that. We may go a little shorter in case, but just gives us the flexibility. Okay. Thank you. Bruce, you have a question? Bruce, you have to come up to the, because it's being filmed.
To be clear, from our point of view, you, you don't expect us to come with a prepared statement. We're just going to come and then you'll ask questions, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I want to thank Cindy, Taylor, Peter, Bruce, all for participating, all the folks at home, folks who came to support or speak on behalf of the process. So thank you, everyone, and we will start on the regular agenda now. Do we need a break? Are we good? Okay, a five-minute break, please. Okay, David Weinsdorf is missing in action.
Get the Warriors' squad.
Oh, David.
What is he doing?
The Warriors' squad.
Okay, David, let's reconvene. Damien, are you ready? Okay. All right. Thank you all. We're going to now start. Thank you for your patience. We are going to start with our open time for public expression. Three-minute limit per person. If you wish to address the council, please approach the podium, and if you would state your name and address, if you feel comfortable with that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ed Bocchi. I owned Navi's Bar for 30 years. My address is One Band Share Way in Fairfax. As a business owner, the newly installed bicycle rack on Broadway Street takes away the parallel loading zone. The loading zone that you replaced it with is too short. Most trucks, delivery trucks are sticking out into the street, and others are double parking because there's no place to park, and it's very hazardous for cars and pedestrians because they're sticking almost by the crosswalk there and everything else. And then on sun, on the weekends, even though you have the bicycle rack up, most bicycle people are still using the sidewalks on Broadway and the yellow zone, leaving it for us still not to use as a loading zone. So I think what, another alternative would be to put more bike racks on mono parking lot, or otherwise use the location of the bike museum instead, because it's taken away from us, tax, business people that pay taxes here, and we can't, the loading is bad and they're not using the bike rack. And I have pictures here, if you want to see them, showing everything.
Can you give those to the clerk? Okay, well, we're not, we cannot take action on any items in public expression, but a couple of things. The bike rack there is a pilot. It's not, it, part of it was to test and see if it worked. It sounds like you're giving us feedback that it's not working. One of the things I think we should do is see what we can do about getting people to actually use those racks rather than have them on the sidewalks. But the other thing that's going to come up, I'm hopeful next month, in February, is we do have a number of bike racks that haven't been installed yet by our public works guys throughout town, and I think maybe, given that the storm is over, maybe we can start getting those installed throughout town, and maybe that will cause people to start using those racks, and maybe we can bring back the pilot a little sooner. I think that was six months, and we just installed it at, what, a month or so ago, Renee?
Uh, December.
End of, end of November.
Okay. So what I think we might want to do is, Garrett, for the February agenda, can we discuss the bike racks and when those are going to be installed? And we may want to revisit that pilot a little sooner, maybe in March, and see what we can do about, I don't think we can issue citations to bicyclists using the sidewalk, even though it's inconvenient.
Can I also add, if we're going to bring this back, making it an agenda item, could we also look at others who have actually photographed the racks when they have been used? Because I understand there are times, and I go by all the time, that they're absolutely unused, as your photographs will probably portray, and I've also seen them completely full. And I've been talking with bicyclists and trying to get a sense of whether the pilot's effective or not. So I, just to make sure we explore all of the different, all of the different angles on this, moving forward.
Well, that leaves us two. By having that rack there, there's only one yellow zone left in Fairfax. It's pretty tough for the drivers.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Let's bring it back as an agenda item to discuss it in February, at least when we're going to be able to install those other bike racks, and maybe we can talk more about the pilot then and get an earlier sense of how it's going. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you for listening.
Next.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Miller. I'm a Fairfax resident. I'd like to say a few words about police misconduct, and it's a shame that Chief Moran isn't here tonight, because he needs to hear this. So I came before this council two months ago, and I told you about being detained and harassed by two Fairfax police officers. My crime was taking my own mail out of my own mailbox. I was put on the ground under threat of force, and when I objected and when I tried to explain, I had two cops standing over me, threatening me, harassing me, insulting me, for almost 10 minutes, while I sat in the gutter. At no time did they make any attempt to determine if a crime had actually been committed. I filed a formal complaint against the two police officers, and here's what I've learned about my town in the last six months since, since that incident. My police department allows their police to escalate an incident with a threat of violence before they determine if a crime's been committed and when there's no threat from the person they're encountering. My town's police department and town council tolerate police harassment, bullying and threats towards citizens who've committed no crime. Fairfax police officers are allowed to lie to investigators when a, when a complaint is filed about police misconduct. The police chief will cover up any harassment or, or mistreatment. The mayor, the town council, and the city manager will refuse to help a citizen who asks for assistance. Not one of you lifted a finger to help me. Most of you didn't even respond to me. And I don't know if that's out of indifference or what, but if what happened to me had happened to you, or if that incident happened to one of your kids, I guarantee you'd be outraged. I was the victim of a crime. The reason I encountered those cops in the first place is a neighbor filed a false, a blatantly false police report against me. I'd never met this neighbor, never had any interactions with them. Apparently, if you're the head of the Rotary Club, president of the Rotary Club in this town, and you're friends with the cops, you can sic the cops on your neighbors with a blatantly false report and have no consequences from it. Last month, Chief Moran sent me the official results of the investigation to my complaint against the officers. The official result of this complaint is that I fabricated the entire thing. Chief Moran found, found that my complaint was, quote, "unfounded," and the definition of unfounded in here is that the incident, the alleged acts did not occur. Everything that was in my complaint actually happened to me, and it absolutely was misconduct. I find this fairly Orwellian, and it's beyond insulting. I find it as a deliberate attempt to intimidate me and to try to get me to drop this issue. So the police department and the town are going to pretend like this just didn't happen. So your police chief has signaled through this report that it's okay for police officers to harass citizens, and that it's okay to lie to investigators. When you decide, when the police decide that it's, it's, they're going to selectively enforce the law, or decide which laws they don't enforce and who they're going to enforce them against, and when they say it's okay to harass people, and when they cover up police misconduct, they're no longer police officers, they're just armed thugs. Wearing a badge and a gun doesn't give you the right to insult or threaten people who've done nothing but stand up for their right to walk down the street when they're minding their own business and not be harassed, and stand up for their rights when they're being wrongly detained. So I filed a tort claim with the town clerk this morning, and I'm going to be filing a lawsuit against the town of Fairfax. The police department and you, the council, could not have handled this worse, and you should all be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you. Other public comment? Jody?
Good evening. Jody Timms, Cascade Drive. I'm before you tonight on behalf of the Commission on Aging as the representative from the town of Fairfax, and I just wanted to give you a brief update. First of all, the commission met last Thursday, and all, as always, we have an educational session first. We talked about family caregiving. Just want to thank all the unsung heroes, family and friends out there who take care of folks who need that kind of help and support, unpaid folks. The County of Marin actually receives $100,000 each year, excuse me, every four years, from the Older Americans Act to provide services for family caregivers in the county. And so as part of the annual, or the every four-year request for proposals, the commissioners interviewed 74 different caregivers to find out what are their needs, so that we can address those needs in, in the services that this money will provide support for. So that was very interesting, and, and we had a panel of people who have dementia and they're caregivers that presented last week. It was very informative. The next meeting will be on February 4th, excuse, yeah, February 12th in Novato on fall prevention. So anybody out there who might want to learn a little bit more on how to keep yourself from falling and what to do if you do fall, that will be the topic of the next meeting. One of the findings of the grand jury last year, entitled Aging in Marin, What's the Plan? One of the main findings was that there, the information for seniors in this county is inconsistent and often difficult to access. There actually are quite a few services that are available, not nearly enough, but there are, are quite a few. But getting that information to seniors and for seniors and their family members and friends isn't, doesn't always happen. friends isn't, doesn't always happen smoothly and easily. So the county has been working for the last year to improve that function. And next week, on the 20th, they will be personally manning the new information and assistance program by phone. So there will be four people who are working that system rather than calling and getting, you know, push three and push six and push nine, which is very difficult for all of us, but certainly for seniors. There will be actual people answering the phone, helping people learn about resources and services in Marin County. So I'm really excited about that. I think it'll be really helpful for seniors. The last thing I just want to mention is the age-friendly effort, Age Friendly Cities, a World Health Organization initiative that many of the cities in Marin are considering, Fairfax among them. So we have formed the task force and through Park and Recs. And we will be scheduling, the actual application for Fairfax to become an age-friendly city was submitted on December 2nd. And we will be, so we're waiting to hear, probably another few weeks, on whether or not we've been granted that designation so that we can further undertake the assessment and plan and implementation of some changes to improve our town for seniors. There are three other cities in Marin that are also doing it. Corte Madera, Novato, and San and Salmo are looking into the process and Sausalito has already been given that designation. So on the council, on the Commission on Aging, we get together as a support group, those of us who are looking at that and working to support each other. So I'm just excited to let you know that that's moving forward and I'll let you know if we get that designation. If I can, just quickly switch hats for a minute. I also want to present or be here before you as a member of the Climate Action Committee, which met last night. And we would also like to monthly come before you with just an idea or some information about what that committee is up to. We're primarily, we have three different initiatives we're focusing on this year, but one of the main, the primary one possibly, is to try to increase by 100 the number of households who are deep green in the town of Fairfax. So if you're not an MCE or Marin Clean Energy customer, we're encouraging you as a household or business in Fairfax to switch to MCE. And if you're light green, we really encourage you to switch to the 100% renewable, deep green option. And the Climate Action Committee is working closely with MCE to develop a marketing plan to get more visibility for MCE here within the town. And the last thing I just want to mention is that we will actually be having a member from MCE, one of the staff, at the next Sustainable Fairfax Film Event, which is January 30th. They'll be showing the future of energy and the Marin, someone from Marin Clean Energy will be there. So that's a good time to come, see a great, inspiring film, and sign yourself up for deep green if you're not there already. Thank you.
Just one thing I want to add, Jody, as a member of the Climate Action Committee as well, one of the things we wanted to look at was having more businesses in town jump into deep green. So Garrett and I meet with the chamber each month and I already pitched the idea last month and they're moving forward on putting in their newsletter and getting more involved with MCE. So I know that's an area that the committee can help on, but it's moving somewhat. So, and they're going to have somebody at their next mixer from MCE perhaps talking about as well. So we're getting it on both sides, which would be great. Thank you, Jody.
Yes, and last night we generated a few more ideas that we have for MCE to help us with throughout the town. So, yeah, we're working on it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Sierra, I think we've got somebody that's been waiting patiently. No, go ahead.
That's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to come up here a while ago, but commentary and questions. Bruce said something about climate change. All kinds of places to go with that. Somebody called me a terrorist the other day, or terrorist supporter, basically for suggesting that terrorists have their reasons and that we perhaps create terrorism and terrorisms basically through our actions, through our consuming, through our lifestyles, which is pretty much invisible to us as we just go about our lives, making a living, basically exchanging everything for money and getting in our cars, driving to the city, driving back, going out and buying something at Costco, whatever. And we don't see the connection between how we live, how we spend, how we act, how we spend our time, and what's going on in the world. I'm just kind of suggesting mostly to you and maybe to some of us who are sitting on our couches, that we're all in it and our actions and how we live has an effect. And just because we're focused on making a living and paying the bills or whatever, you know, that doesn't recuse us from our responsibility. I mean, it's ignorance. But when it comes to climate change and all that, I personally believe most of us can cut our energy consumption by a third, no sweat. It's like, how hot do we keep our houses? Do we ever bother to wear a sweater? You know, come on. How many trips do we make to the market for driving around, just like five times a day rather than adding them up? It's like, we could conserve a whole lot more. You know, that's just where that's at. We think we're so cool here in Fairfax. We've got greeny-green, whatever. And, you know, a lot of greeny-green is just greenwashing. It really is. It's like, no amount of consuming and buying stuff is really taking care of the water and the soil and the earth. It's like, the only way to take care of living environments is not to consume them and turn them into byproducts, which we throw into landfills to begin with. We've got some problems here. We're getting pretty gray. It's like, where is anybody, I don't know quite what to do about it, but where is anybody between 18 and 35 going to live unless they have a trust fund or income? It's like, the price of land is what the price of land is, but look around at who's actually around. Most young people are out of here. It's like, where are our kids going? Do we care if our kids are living close or anything like that? And lastly, I have a question. Who does the town bank with? Who? Bank of Marin?
Bank of Marin.
No longer anything to do with Bank of America? And none of the major banks?
We have, we maintain one leftover account there because some checks from the state, for instance, go channel through there and it doesn't have a lot of money.
Yeah, it's just a transfer facility. Thank you for doing that.
And certainly, and it saved a lot of money, actually.
And I really appreciate you guys not banking with a big bank anymore. And I really support everyone in the community, supporting community banks and taking your money out of the big banks because a lot of the mischief that happens in the world happens to do with the big banks and economics, and economics being more important than that which supports all of our lives, which is basically the common to nature, which is not something we can monetize. Thank you.
Thank you, Sierra. Next speaker.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Sharon Sager and I'm a Fairfax resident. And for those who may not know me, I served for 14 years on the Ross Valley School District Board. And I'm here tonight to speak to you about something that's very important to me and should be to our community. And that is that the school district is considering possibly selling the Deer Park School Site. And I wanted to communicate to you a little more about what I've sent you in an email previously, about the proper process that's supposed to happen when a school district decides that it's going to look into disposing of a surplus property or long-term lease of a surplus property. And the ed code is really clear on that. It says, "It's the intent of the legislature to have the community involved before decisions are made about school closure or the use of surplus space, thus avoiding community conflict." The governing board is supposed to convene a committee, a district advisory committee, made up of seven to 11 community members who represent various constituencies within the community to be, to serve on this committee. And the committee is supposed to take a look at projected school enrollment, priority lists of ways to possibly use the sites, circulate information throughout the community, hold public hearings, and determine the limits of tolerance about how that property might be used, and to issue a report to the community and to the school board. And at this point, the school district does not have an intention to convene this committee. They don't believe that they're required to. At the last meeting, they said that they had a committee 30 years ago regarding this property and that they're no longer required to have one, which I totally disagree with and which is very clear if you take a look at first seven, 11 committees online, anywhere you see the districts have these all the time. They don't just have one per property. Anytime that a change of use in that property, either closing it, considering to sell it, they reconvene another seven, 11 committee. And I know that the superintendent currently plans to convene a committee, which would be a superintendents committee, which is not subject to the Brown Act. So those meetings could be closed. They're going to be inviting specific people. They want to serve on that committee rather than asking for representation of the community. And they intend to ask for some representation from the Fairfax Town Council. I have nothing against having open communication between town councils and school boards. I think that's really important. But in this case, the education code is really clear about what the expectation is and the type of composition of that committee and how this committee has to be an open Brown Act committee so that the community can participate, hear all of the conversation about why a school district would want to consider disposing of a property and participate in that determination. So I just want to be clear that my goal here is to communicate to the community about this potential disposal of this property so that they can be engaged in this process to encourage the school district to actually have the process that they're supposed to have and to encourage you to ask them to have that process in the proper way. And then remind our community that it's really difficult to acquire property. And when you're considering selling a property such as this that is held in trust for our community for future generations, we really should be thinking about whether that makes sense. Would we ever be able to sell this property and then acquire another property should the need arise in the future? And we can't just think out 10 or 20 years. We have to think long-term. This town is going to be here forever and we never know when the enrollment might grow. We've had higher enrollments in our schools in the past than we do today, and that was with much lower housing available to occupy. So we really have to think long-term when we're talking about a property sale. And I understand the limitations and the difficulties of maintaining a closed school site, having been on the board for a long time, but it's the buildings that's the problem. The buildings are deteriorating, the land is not. So if the buildings are no longer usable, you can tear them down. You can make that property available to the community to use as community space and when the need arises, you have the property. Because I don't know how we would ever find property again. And in this community of hills and valleys, it's really difficult to find an ideal site for schools. And I know it's difficult, but I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Potentially for the February meeting, maybe we could have an item to discuss the possibility of sending a letter. We cannot get into all the details. We really can't be involved in the decision-making necessarily, but perhaps we can ask that they, not necessarily, we're not going to research the education code, we're not going to get into those innuendos, but potentially ask that they have open meetings with community involvement. So maybe that's something for February we can consider.
Okay, why don't I, I haven't had a chance to check with the superintendent yet. I think one of the things maybe I could point out, if I may, is council member Weinshof and I, when council member Weinshof was mayor last year, we actually met with the superintendent and we talked about the concept of having a school liaison committee that would consist of two council members and two school board members that can meet on a regular basis to talk about issues. Seems like if they had that committee, that one's open to the public. We noticed the meetings and that would seem to be, could be a topic of discussion.
Well, maybe we can meet with the superintendent. He just had a letter to the editor recently. Maybe you and I can meet with the superintendent. So we can take this and discuss it later. But thank you for coming. Bruce, did you have a comment?
Yes. Also from the Climate Action Committee, I just had to respond to something that Sierra said and agree. It is definitely possible for a household in Fairfax to decrease our energy usage by, you said, 30%. In our household, we track summer and winter gas usage, summer and winter electricity usage, and summer and winter water usage, so six different figures. And in about three years of pretty intensive energy work on our house, insulation, windows, and a whole lot of plugging leaks, a whole lot of plugging leaks, and other things, we have reduced all six of those figures by half. So just wanted to, and I wanted to point out that we have the PACE program available. Barbara has spoken about that in council meetings before, so that people can get access to low-interest loans that can put the loan on the house rather than on themselves in case they move out of the house later on, that can help to do that sort of work.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay, so now, oh, go ahead, David.
Yeah, I just want to do an open time from a council member on a more personal note. Sort of riffing a little bit, a contrasting view from the other speaker on police. I had an opportunity to avail myself of police services. On January 1st, my dad had a small stroke and they live in the city. And I got a call from my mom, who you can imagine, they've been married for 60 years, was tremendously exercised at that moment and really was unable to call 911 from their home. And after ascertaining that indeed my dad was in distress, I hit 911 here, which of course brought me to the Fairfax Dispatch. And I know that what the dispatcher did was totally routine and had probably on the first, in the first paragraph of the standard operating procedures, but the fact that he did it so well, I think calls out, because a lot of people pay, we pay a lot of taxes in this town and police and fire are a lot of that. And you rarely get to avail yourself of what you pay your taxes for. But when you do and it occurs, you say to yourself, wow, that was a bit of a lifesaver. And what this dispatcher officer, who I have no idea who it is, did was immediately ascertain that the distress was not about something here in Fairfax, but was in fact in San Francisco. And what he did, he did two things. He immediately hit whatever magic button was on his console, had me plugged into SFPD in a nanosecond. And then I thought he did something that was even, I think, more extraordinary. He didn't hang up. He waited until the connection had been made here, heard voices on both sides, and then I heard him, you know, click off and go on. And I might say that the connectivity between the two of those things, the San Francisco Police Department and Fire Department were there before I was done speaking to the dispatcher. So I heard what the other speaker said earlier and I just want to make it very clear to our officers how grateful one family was for their professionalism.
Thank you, David, and we hope your dad's doing well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. I just want to say that also so many folks who voted for Measure J, part of that was having our dispatch available 24/7. So anytime you call, you're talking to Fairfax. So hopefully, most of us don't need to avail ourselves, but if we do, they're there and they really know what they're doing. So with that, we're going to move to the consent calendar. And I know I want to just add a few things to a couple of things, but I want to ask council members if, I just want to add a couple thoughts to a couple of things. I don't want to pull things off at consent, but I want to see if other people want to pull anything off consent or add something to any of the items.
I just have one.
John.
Yeah, okay, Mayor. I have just one correction to the minutes, which is item number five. On page 40, it said, I, sorry, page four of the minutes. Meetings aren't that long.
They could be.
They could be, yeah. I mean, it depends on the detail of the minutes, I suppose. Anyway, on page four, it said that, this was in regards to the open space dedication of the Fairfax's portion. And Fairfax had, was contributing $50,000 as well as some various, you know, some money on top of that, about $8,000 something at that time. And the minutes say that I had requested the $50,000 to go towards maintenance and I just wanted to clarify that it was the balance over $50,000 that I was requesting to go to rejuvenation of the property rather than to the purchase price.
So, Joe, did you, I don't see where that is, John.
You don't? Okay, I'll pull it up.
Oh, council, oh, no, it's page four, under approve the transfer. Okay, the, council member Reed suggested that... Okay, the, council member Reed suggested that the $50,000 be allocated to the restoration work. What he's saying is he wanted the allocation.
The balance over $50,000.
The balance over $50,000. Okay. Thank you.
It's small.
Thank you, John. I have just three things to add to three of the items. Does anyone else have anything? Okay. So on item number two, this is reappointment of two planning commissioners, Shelley Hamilton and Esther Gonzalez Parber. I want to thank them for that. But I also, we are losing two incredible planning commissioners, Brandon Ketchum and Shelby Lamont. Brandon has served on the planning commission for eight years, Commissioner Lamont for seven years. It's a tremendous loss. They have given so much of their time and really are experts in this process. So I just want to sincerely thank them, and I know all of the council wants to thank them for their time, their commitment, and their integrity, and really how well they've served our town. So we will miss them and we look forward to two other people stepping up. But I just wanted to make sure that that got said on the air. So if they're listening or others are listening, we just want to thank them. The second item I want to bring up is the item six, dealing with the approval of the 1,250 funding commitment to the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative for a part-time coordinator. A couple of things, our staff report said that we would, we would allocate the, the 1,250 with a condition that they provide a work plan for what they want to accomplish. And I think that's important, but I would also like to add to that a condition that they seek, actively seek grant funding to support the position over the long term rather than continually asking for the cities and the school districts to fund this position. It's not that sustainable to do it in that manner, in that if one city pulls out, we're in trouble. And I have connected with Canat Phillips, who is the California Center for Public Health Advocacy, about looking at grant funding opportunities. And I will convey this information to Renee, who's one of the co-chairs. But Kaiser has small grants available that could be used for this. There are other grant opportunities they sent me potentially. But I would really like to have a condition that they seek grant funding and they come back not only with a work plan, but what grant funding they are trying to obtain to fund this position over the long term.
May I, may I comment on that?
Yes, of course.
So thank you, because there is certainly a piece of the, of the strategic plan moving forward is that we would acquire the, if you will, it's, it's seed money in order to begin and fund a position so that we do have a coordinator. This has been all, the efforts have been entirely volunteer-based. We've had three community outreach events. We've reached over 500 people. We've got a support group meeting the first Tuesday of every month at the Fairfax Library. The collaboration with the agencies involved, there are probably 10 different sectors of the community who have invested in this. The San Anselmo Council last night approved unanimously to fund the initial ask. And the Ross Valley School District has expressed clear eye support, as has the town union high school district. So as we move forward, part of the plan, and John Wright, Mayor of San Anselmo, and I are working closely together, to make sure that we explore funding opportunities, grant funding going forward, especially for things like a crisis hotline, which would be staffed by students, trained by, by other members of the community, such as the model that they use for rape crisis hotlines. Those are all fundable through grant funding. So we are exploring that as we move forward, but really appreciate that the towns, in conjunction with the districts, would step up, which does create a buy-in for the whole community. It's the first time this approach has really been used. The other coalitions in the county are funded by the county. They've got different strings attached to the work that they do and they're not able to customize to the actual needs that exist in this community, given the numbers, if you look at the California Healthy Kids Survey, as to what the need is, and especially for support systems and working with our teens to make sure that they are supported in, in something that is challenging for everyone involved. So, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that.
One thing, so I would say, I really think three things. A scope of work for the coordinator, what is, what is kind of exactly what would the coordinator be doing? The work plan, which would follow with the work plan? And then what grant opportunities they are seeking and that they're moving forward on those? Those would be all things, rather than us just slipping it into the budget, I'd like us to bring that back as soon as it's available so we can understand where we're going.
So Garrett, did I not forward you all of the, the coordinator position roles and responsibilities? I have paperwork that I actually thought was going to make it into the packet, but I, I'll follow up with that, make sure it gets to the right place.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then on agenda item eight, which is accepting the report on the town's emergency preparedness activities related to the December storm, which, thank you for preparing that report. At the next council meeting, the staff report mentions that we would have the police and fire chiefs prepare a report. I'd also like you, as a town manager, to talk about what the Department of Public Work Staff did during the storm. I don't think people fully appreciate the hard works of DPW and they all worked during Christmas holidays. And so I think they play a really important role, so I'd like to hear that. And also, I would like to discuss the role of the town's disaster council at that meeting and also talk about activating it and moving forward. So just, I just wanted to add those couple of things. And so let's make sure, I think we're going to have a very full agenda in February. But, so if we could add that, that would be great. And otherwise, if nobody else has any comments, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar with those few little changes. Garrett?
Just public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Garrett. Public comment on the consent calendar. Peter?
Thank you, thank you, Barbara. I'm, I'm actually concerned about item number nine, the participation in the Department of Defense program providing, you know, military surplus materials to police forces. Perhaps in Fairfax, you know, there wasn't a huge exchange of, of material, but I think it would be good to get a more complete report from the police chief. And I think it's something that does warrant a little bit more discussion. And I'd like to just know, hear a little bit more about what exactly, what materials were ordered, how that came about. And it, it's something that does concern me and a lot of other people I've been speaking to as well. And perhaps in this particular acquisition and return of materials, there wasn't anything to be that concerned about. But potentially, we've seen across the country the potential for, you know, problems with police forces obtaining all this military hardware. And I, I think it does warrant a little bit more of a discussion.
Were you able to read through agenda item nine? Perhaps it wasn't clear, but one of the things that happened when I looked into this was that the previous police chief, this was not our current police chief, saw this material. One of the sergeants brought it to him and basically you're just checking boxes to see what looks good. So the idea was to try to get things, and we didn't get any Humvees, we didn't get a tank, was to get things that we couldn't otherwise pay for. And so what, when, meanwhile, Chief Moran came in and as the stuff started to come in, found it really wasn't usable. And basically the determination is we will no longer proceed with this program. And one of our police sergeants has been spending the last six months trying to send stuff back because it's not an easy process. There's a lot of accounting that goes forward with this. And the only thing that the police intend to keep are some rifles that they use purely for target practice. They are not used for on duty at all. So I'm wondering what you would like to see that isn't covered or perhaps I didn't flesh out?
Well, I, it wasn't clear to me exactly what was ordered and returned. And, you know, I think that, that would be important, I think, to, you know, get a full disclosure of what was ordered and returned.
Well, we can, part of the problem was is some of the things where the boxes were checked, we never even received. But Garrett, why don't we do this for the next consent calendar? Why don't we flesh it out a little bit more?
If I may, if we can make the next consent, we will. I just don't know. Obviously, the sergeant's going to have to put it in some form or format that anyone can understand. So it may come in March, if that's okay? If it's just a list of what we actually received and returned?
Right.
It just will take a little time, that's all.
Okay, well, let's, let's do this for March as a consent calendar item. So if that's helpful, Peter.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
And just for clarification, these are items that were attained for free, right? These are not things that we paid anything for.
No.
Yeah, just to clarify.
It's, it's free and that database that people refer to had a list. So things like night vision goggles, which were like $90,000, were 15 of them. You know, it, it turns out a lot of the things aren't useful, a lot of things weren't what we, they thought. They're returning all of them. The problem is the return process. I think my understanding is you have to get this one place to accept it, to return it. And if they say no, I don't know what you do next with it. It's just an odd process. So really, we're not doing it. We could prepare the list, that's not a problem. I, I just think we might need a little more time if it, if it takes.
And also to just say is that I know one of our sergeants has been spending six months trying to be able to return things and you can't just throw, there are a few things you can throw away, but you can, and you end up tracking all this stuff, I guess, to the end of time. So it's a big problem. So let's look at something for, why don't we just pull the, I mean, why, I think we can accept the report as is, but we'll put a more fleshed-out item for March on the agenda. Okay?
Okay.
Does that work for you?
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I should say, I was, I don't know, maybe other council members requested it also, but I requested this to be put on here because I share your concern. And yeah, it's, it's a black box kind of when you sign up for this program and this, it's like Book of the Month Club, maybe, I, I don't know. Well, just not in the same way, but you don't really know what you're getting. Basically, the, the sergeant at that time, you know, said, okay, you know, I'll, I'll buy into this program and check the boxes and the previous chief okayed it. Neither of those individuals are on the force right now. And so, yeah, it is really kind of a, a little bit of a white elephant deal. And, you know, probably a Humvee is the most useful thing that would come out of this program, and we definitely didn't sign up for one of those, and I don't think we want one of those here either.
So Sierra, you've already spoken during public expression, I'm sorry.
Well, so what, Barbara? This happens to be on the consent calendar and there's a difference.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm mixing it up. Okay. What is your comments on the consent calendar?
Um, a couple. One is thank you for, Peter, for bringing that up for clarification. And the second one happens to be with the Healthy Youth Collaboration, which I happen to be a part of, and I basically wholeheartedly support it. And I'd also like to bring up, just to comment in terms of yes, get grants and, but shouldn't youth in our future and kind of one of our biggest assets, period for the future, be a part of the school system and be funded and be a priority more than, say, $90,000 government surplus, night vision goggles, which are great maybe, but the other elephant is how and why are we allowing so much of our life, blood, and money and taxes to go into endless wars? And yes, we are powerless. We cannot do a damn thing about it and we're stuck with it. Or are we? Or are there things that we can and should be doing about our future and our lives and our children, such as funding education and healthy youth? Or buying a bunch of night vision goggles and blowing people up in other parts of the world because we want our cheap oil and cheap products?
So thank you for your comment. Other comments on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the couple of little changes I made?
Yeah, as well as the changes I made. Yeah, I'll be happy to move approval of the consent calendars with the amendments that have been discussed.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Reed Goddard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
It's 10 o'clock.
So we have just, actually, we're in good shape. We have the housing element and we have our special meeting, which should be relatively quick. I'm not sure, do we have anything else? No, just the housing.
Discussion on Rite's Way.
Oh, and the Rite's Way, I'm sorry, John. So let's, I think we're doing good. I don't think we need to move, continue more things because I think we're at 10 o'clock, which for us is very early in the evening.
Would you like to have us do committee reports or?
Let's do those very quickly. Why don't we go through those? Everyone gets three minutes.
How about 30 seconds? Two Flood Zone 9 meetings. The one was a public meeting at the firehouse for the community. The other was one of our regular four to five meetings that we have annually. Many folks have been reading letters in the IJ about concerns about the speed with which the projects are moving forward. Very legitimate concerns. I encourage everybody who's actively, you know, focusing on flood zone matters to please attend the Flood Zone 9 meetings. They rotate among all of the towns. And share your opinions with the Flood Advisory Board for Flood Zone 9.
Is there a workshop that's being scheduled or has been around?
There is a, a workshop that's being scheduled specifically on the issue of the detention basin out at White Hill and Loma Alta just above the school. It is scheduled for Tuesday, the 27th, at the Canyon Club at 7:00 PM. And I encourage everyone who has concerns or interest in what Flood Zone 9 is doing with the $100 million plus of fee money, which includes a lot of grant funding as well, to please attend the meeting. The Flood Zone Board would greatly appreciate the insight and shared opinions of the community.
Okay, David, John, you've got three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay. Period of December contains lots of community stuff, volunteer Christmas parties and whatnot, and I attended many of those. I also met with some citizens doing a volunteer-based trails thing on Power Lane. I also met with you, Barbara, and, you know, several other, you know, Garrett and people, the California Corps has been doing a bunch of maintenance on different trails around. Attended a GPIC meeting in this room and, that's it. Oh, council emergency meeting here.
So you've already heard about the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative. There's been multiple meetings and the energy and enthusiasm is growing. Sustainable Fairfax hosted a fundraiser. It was the very first event at the Moran Mountain Bike Museum. It was excellently well-attended. I want to thank the community for the support. And I think that we made the mountain bike museum owners cry because the space was absolutely beautiful. And as they are in the process of opening, please lend them your support and check out what they're, what they're up to over there. I did attend the county housing element hearing to hear the deliberations of the supervisors and it was very interesting. And I continue to educate myself on what's happening at the county level and in our local jurisdictions. Of course, we are looking after the trees, make sure that your trees can breathe at their root bases and clear the dirt away from the bottom because it's a time when they could get... they could get rot and be more susceptible to the sudden oak death. I will be meeting with Patty Brightman from the Marin Organizing Committee on Friday. And we will also have a Safe Roots to Schools Ross Valley Task Force meeting, which I will be attending with John also on Friday.
Thanks. I attended Marin Clean Energy, the Climate Action Committee, a couple of those. Attended the ABAG Delegates Meeting, which is a group of people that are involved working with Pat Eklund, who's the rep to ABAG, on trying to make sure that she's able to coalesce all the cities and towns' ideas of what we want next. And ABAG was there and really said the next sustainable community strategy is not going to be top-down. We don't know what MTC will do, but that's that. Attended a county-wide public disaster emergency preparedness meeting, Sustainable Fairfax fundraiser, Marin Telecommunications Agency meeting. I also attended the Ross Valley Fire Association meeting. And they said it was the first time they'd ever seen an elected official at their association meeting. And one guy had been 20 years. So I did that. I brought cookies. And the other thing, I met with the Park Committee on something I'm going to bring to the council in about a month or so. The Park Committee approved it, which is a plaque for the Rosie the Riveter's that we want to have in the women's club. Maybe it'll start a trend that we may do plaques in the future. But I had a conference call with Congresswoman Jackie Speer's office. They're pushing for a National Rosie the Riveter Day. And they said, things in Congress are glacial speed, so we should move ahead with our plaque. Phyllis Gould is really our Rosie. We're going to try to commemorate her particularly. But Congresswoman Speer or her staff may participate when we actually award the plaque. So stay tuned. You know, another thing to kind of signal women, gender equity. Let's move forward and do that. And Zero Waste Committee meeting, Renee and I did that. Attended monthly Chamber of Commerce meetings. And also attended the Heart of Marin fundraiser award ceremony, which was pretty interesting. So a lot of stuff going on, but we will move forward to the Town Manager's Report.
Real briefly, I thought I'd report on Manzanita Road. As you know, the road was washed out in the last storm. So where we're at right now is the surveyor's been out there, geotechnical firm's been out there. Surveyors completed their topo map, given that to the geotech firm. They're pretty close to coming back with their preliminary options to the engineering firm, so we can move forward with that. And lastly, PG&E actually removed their exposed gas pipe with no impact to the residents in the area. So I think it's looking pretty good. Hopefully, the next report, although that would just be in February, if we get an update and have some updates on that, then I'll report back then.
Any, any concept of a timeline on that, just to put it in perspective for people?
No, no timeframe at this time. I think a lot depends on the options. We're hoping to get the options back in like a couple of weeks. Well, not the options, the engineering report back in the preliminary options in a couple of weeks.
And then at some point in the future, maybe you can give us an update on what's happening with the pavilion, if anything, ever. Okay, thank you, Garrett. So with that, I just want to remind folks that after we're through with the housing element, we are going to move on to our special meeting. So we'll, I guess, adjourn and then reconvene in the special meeting. But with that, we will move on to, items 10, 11, and 12 are moved, continue to the February meeting. So we're moving on to, oh, I'm sorry, John, we're not going to forget the rights away, is discussion and consideration of report on status of the housing element.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members and those in the audience that are still with us and those at home that might be looking now or in the future. This is a report on the status of the update to the housing element. And I'm just going to give you an overview of the report to start with. And then if you want to get into the woods and any of the issues in the report, that's great. There'll be three tables I'll be referencing in the report. And after I've gone through this in an overview, we've actually brought in those tables to put on the screen here. You have them in your draft and we can walk through just to reiterate what those three tables say going forward. So again, this is just a report on the status of the update of the housing element. If you recall back on November 5th, the council directed staff to get going with that update after we'd had a couple of preliminary meetings at the Affordable Housing Committee level and the General Plan Implementation Committee level. But on the 5th, you said to get going. So we brought on the subconsultant and got our primary consultant going. We convened a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Affordable Housing Committee in this room on November 25th. And much of what's coming out of this report is sort of a status of what came out of that joint meeting and some of the issues that were raised, both prior to that meeting and at that meeting. Basically, in order for municipalities to take advantage of an eight-year update cycle going forward, instead of a four-year cycle going forward, the town must adopt an updated housing element by May 31st this year. I'll get back to that in a moment. Regarding the timeline, you will recall that in our previous meetings on November 5th, we used the word streamline and expeditious review, sort of interchangeably. Initially, staff thought that the draft housing element might qualify, this process of updating the element might qualify for the expedited review. This ultimately proved unavailable because certain criteria we could not meet yet. Specifically, the town has not made the zoning changes that are called for in the current housing element by the end of the fourth RENA cycle. And I'll try to phrase things in layman terms the best I can. RENA, again, stands for Regional Housing Needs allocations. It's done every four to eight years. And we're now in, going into the fifth cycle. The expedited review is available to those towns that are in complete compliance. And all that means is that HCD's statutory 60-day review maximum would get lowered down to four to six weeks. However, we feel that HCD, and in discussions with our subconsultant and HCD through her, the staff that's appointed to us is very familiar with our most recent housing element. It was just certified by the state in November 2013. And I'll get back to why it's going to be a fairly easy review with our strategy going forward. And again, it's required the town adopt the housing element update by May 31st of this year. Our obligation is to address the cycle four and five, the last immediate cycle and this next cycle coming up. If you recall at that November meeting, a member of the public, Mr. Egger, asserted that he had heard from Pat Eklund at ABAG that we could simply roll over our existing sites into the next RENA cycle.
Excuse me, Jim. I, I brought, Frank Egger asserted that we could roll it over. I was the one who brought up that-
Uh, thank you.
-Pat Eklund had said we could roll over.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. So we did, staff, we researched that matter. We were happy that that information was brought forward. And we researched that matter. And in essence, got confirmation from the state Office of Housing and Community Development. And there were conversations that also took place between a variety of our staff. And in essence, staff at HCD led us back to the government code, which articulates that for those municipalities that have not made adequate sites available, in other words, are in compliance with the intention of the existing housing element, then they're technically not in compliance. And they have to not only address the next RENA going forward, this, we're in cycle five, we have to address the immediate past cycle and only the immediate past cycle. I'll come back to that in a moment. So again, since the town has not rezoned the opportunity sites needed to meet the adequate sites available requirement, the town will be required to meet the RENA requirement for cycle four and five. I'll be getting into that in a little more detail. Our strategy for meeting that cycle, sorry, meeting the RENA in cycle five, which we're required to cover both cycle four and five, the good news is that it looks like, in essence, we will be able to roll over the existing opportunity sites in our certified housing element. And Table A on the next page of your report lists actually what's happened mathematically with the dropping of cycle three and picking up cycle five. Our RENA allocation from 1999 to 2006 for the third RENA cycle was 64 units. That goes away now. The third, fourth RENA cycle from 2007, 2014 was for 108. That remains. And our new RENA for the cycle of 2015 to 2023 is 63. So we lost 64 and picked up 61. So we have a net reduction of three, where our RENA requirement in the last housing element update was 160, so 172, it's gone to 169. And I'll be getting into woods on how we're going to accommodate that 169, basically using the next sites, the existing opportunity sites, excuse me, with one tweak. Table B, which is attached to your report, this basically shows how we accommodated the last housing element requirements with our opportunity sites, which totaled 124. Okay, that's a very important number to remember, 124. And reason, and then we got credit for already zoned sites or units built going back to 1999. Okay, are you with me? So that gave us credit for 48 units that came off the 172. So 172 minus the 48 is 124. However, we can't go back all the way to 1999. We can only go back now to 2007. So we can't take advantage of all the 48. And in the next table, I'll show you what we can take advantage of. Table C, if you look in your report, again, it starts with our RENA cycle, our RENA requirement for this update, the fifth cycle update, which we're required now to go back and still accommodate cycle four, is 169. We had previously zoned properties that carried forward of 21. And then those projects, sorry, those units permitted from 2006 to 2014 were eight. Okay? So that gives us a requirement of 140. Are you with me? Our previous opportunity sites planned for the potential of 124. Okay? So that leaves a deficit of 16. So fortunately, going back to the staff report for a moment, fortunately, second units had been a big part of the approach in the last update. We wanted to maximize units. We actually applied for allowance of 25 credit. And the state said, no, there's only one year left in the planning period. Your track record on second units is horrible. So no, we're only going to let you have a quota of three. This time, however, in the last year, the Planning Commission has permitted two second units in the last 12 months. Okay? And by meeting the May 31st deadline, we will be on an eight-year cycle instead of four. So two units over, two times eight is 16. And that was our deficit. So the strategy discussed at the joint meeting and that we're bringing forward to air with you all again tonight, is to use the exact same opportunity sites, roll them over. So in essence, what Mr. Egger had said, we will be able to accomplish, even though it's not just for the one fifth RENA cycle, it's for four and five, by just adding 16 second units, either new or informal, illegal, if you will, coming in from the cold, we will accomplish the 169 requirement. Are you with me?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm sure you're going to get to this, so I don't want to interrupt you. Will you be discussing the fact that there's a zoning obligation unmet at the moment that is required?
Yes, 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 yes. Okay. So let me just add that second units, both in the last housing element update and in all those discussions to date, have universally been accepted. In fact, at the earlier Affordable Housing Committee meeting in the summer and also at the joint meeting on the 25th of November, there was avid support. And there's also support for the concept of junior second units, which is basically taking advantage of underused space within existing homes to carve out a unit. So it's a really marvelous approach because you're not actually adding to the built environment. You're making better use of the built environment. It's a lot less onerous on permitting. But that's just an aside on how we're moving forward with massaging our own requirements of second units in the town. It's not going to be an integral part of the strategy on meeting this arena with, with the Housing and Community Development Department at the state level. The good news also is that our subconsultant, who works closely with the staff at HCD, she's doing 25 housing elements at the moment, she passed this approach by our handler at HCD, the strategy of using all the existing housing opportunity sites and adding 16. And they came back with a very positive response with just one caveat, that we should pay very close attention to how other municipalities like Tiburon and Sausalito have succeeded in including the second units in their argument with the state on why they should be counted. So we're doing that. We've gone, actually, in the last cycle, we did quite a bit of research to substantiate, looking at the county records and our records, that we are confident there's at least 30 illegal second units in town. And there may be at least 50 more that are suspect. So again, just in terms of already existing second units, we think we're well-equipped. And we will be in the future revisiting the amnesty ordinance to try and sweeten it. And that's another thing that we've had positive feedback on, both in the last housing element update and in this one to date, which is people think that we should make it easier for second units to either come in from the cold and get formalized and/or create new second units with a little added incentives where it makes sense. So a couple of strategies, one of which you've already, the council's already adopted with the rollover of the fire ordinance, is to relax the sprinkler requirement for second units in what's called the non-wildlife urban interface, WUI, wooey zone of town, which is sort of the flat central part of town along the corridor, up to a 30% slope with the rationale being that fire apparatus can get there if you don't have the sprinklers, they can get there in time. And also to relax the parking requirement, which is often as onerous as the costly sprinkler requirement, inhibiting people from either coming in the cold or from the cold or making new second units, to relax that in the same non-wooey up to 30% because it's along the transit corridor where it makes sense to incentivize people to not rely on an automobile, particularly if they're an efficiency small second unit.
Jim, excuse me, tiny interruption. As you guys are exploring, you said Tiburon, Sausalito, and how they're doing with their second units. Novato and Bob Brown speaking about the junior second units and how they were going to add that into their, their update. Have you got any news back on how that went with HCD? Or are you, can you pursue that?
Yeah. They, they want to see a track, a track record. If you were to carve out junior second units as a whole different policy strategy, independent of second units as a whole, they are not ready to go there because they don't have any track record. Just like they denied us the 25 because we had no track record on regular second units, they want to see it in action, like make it, prove it to us. But that doesn't prohibit us from massaging our own ordinance to allow junior second units and help motivate those because HCD will count those as a unit, whether we call them a junior or not, if they're a standalone unit. Are you with me? So it's, it's a concept we don't have to articulate for them. We can take the ball and run with it to hopefully promote the creation of junior second units. And for example, the hookups already exist for a bedroom that's not being used in a home. Right? Somebody can be occupying that bedroom and it doesn't really impact whether there's an extra car on the site. So it's a, it's a marvelous strategy. And that, we'll come back to independently of the housing element update on when we have the time and bandwidth to look at updating our second unit ordinance and the amnesty ordinance.
So quickly, I just want to add something is that it's my understanding in talking to ABAG that, okay, so I'm supportive of junior second units. And I hope that we will update our second unit to allow for junior units. But it's my understanding in talking to ABAG that currently second units cannot be approved as, junior units cannot be approved as second units by HCD. There needs to be a statute change. So we should not build our hopes on junior change, junior units, but we definitely- So we should not build our hopes on junior units, but we definitely should embrace them because it looks like the tide is turning to do that in the future. But I would say sooner rather than later for us to get our second unit ordinance fixed with the amnesty and the junior units, because Novato's already done it. But anyway, just want to make sure that we're not banking too much on that, because I don't think that'll get us where we need to be.
We're not banking at all with HCD on second units, at all.
Well, except for the 16, the junior unit.
No, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, I misspoke, the junior second units.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. The other concern that's been voiced many times at council meetings as well as other forums, is concern over truly affordable units. So we heard that loud and clear, and we want to accomplish as much as possible in making whatever units get added to town as affordable as possible. So we are working on that to whatever degree we can. And then lastly, next steps, as you know, we've been underway with the update with a lot of the heavy lifting for demographic research and analysis that's required. And we've put together a timeline here, and for example, next Thursday, the workshop, we've already gotten feedback on you on changing the time for that. And that is something required by HCD prior to a draft. And so we've sent out a lot of notices, which we'll try to follow up on and give them a heads up on the changing of the time, but I'll be here in case they do show up, to different stakeholders throughout the county that are involved in this topic. There's a lot of people involved with production of affordable housing, a lot of nonprofits. So we've reached out to the county and other municipalities and put together a pretty inclusive list. And then we'll convene a joint, another joint Planning Commission Affordable Housing Committee meeting before the regular Planning Commission meeting on the 19th, to review the draft, a draft, okay? And then, as our code dictates, the, it has to go through the Planning Commission up to the council. So the Planning Commission would, after the joint meeting, entertain a resolution recommending that the council accept the draft at their fourth, March 4th meeting. And assuming that that was done, then staff would forward on the draft report to HCD. We would also, parallel to this process, be circulating what we think will be an addendum to the mitigated NAGDEC as part of our CEQA obligation to review any changes in the update. And obviously, there are basically no changes with the addition, except for the addition of the 16 second units, which presumably will be spread out throughout the town. But we still have to go through that analysis, and we're doing it. And likewise, assuming that we end up with an addendum to the mitigated NAGDEC, it's not required that we circulate that addendum to mitigated NAGDEC, but we are going to circulate that addendum to mitigated NAGDEC, just so people can understand what's going on. So that would get circulated for a 30-day review period at the same time that the draft element would be sent up to the state after the March 4th meeting. And then, as I mentioned earlier, even though the maximum time allowed for HCD's review statutorily is 60 days, we think that we'll get it back in basically the expedited time period, because they're very familiar, and we're already getting this early heads up that they're very happy with our approach, which is all good news, no new sites. Planning, recommending final adoption from the town council. The Planning Commission would consider a resolution recommending final adoption of the town council, and entertain any comments that were made by HCD. And to this point, I can only envision something regarding the second units, and maybe the language and how we address that. And then hopefully by May 6, the council would have the draft housing element back before them, with the addendum to the mitigated NAGDEC having been circulated with any comments collected and responded to. And then you would hopefully be in a position for final adoption on May 6. If there were still any wrinkles with HCD, then those could be worked out after that deadline of May 31st. It's, the May 31st is for town adoption, not certification. And just to back up a second, just to reiterate, there's the town adoption, then there's HCD certification, and then once that is succinct, it's going forward, whether you're in compliance or not, in what was articulated in the housing element update. So one other bit of good news is that there's a thing called AB 1233, and that's an analysis that is required, part of the law that says you have to use, you have to address the most immediate last RENA. And by doing this analysis in the draft on why we didn't rezone and how we intend to rezone, we're allowed an extra year. Whereas we were required to do the rezoning by the end of this month, we will get an extension to the end of January 2016. Okay?
Is that in the staff report? I'm not sure that I saw that.
I'm not sure it's in the staff report, actually.
It does talk about the, I think you might talk about the zoning you have till January, but it didn't articulate it the same way.
Right, right, right. So just to reiterate, the good news, it's looking pretty firm, that we'll be able to roll over our existing opportunity sites, add the 16 units, and we're there. And assuming this is done by May 31st, the town will be done with housing element updates until the year 2023.
Just a quick question on your schedule for February 19th. You have a special joint Planning Commission Affordable Housing Committee. I would urge you to get notes out to Affordable Housing Committee, make sure people are available on that date.
Okay. And we, these dates are somewhat flexible. We may have to have special meetings.
Well, but if you can get it scheduled sooner rather than later, people can mark their calendars.
Sure, good point. I'm fortunate, because two of the people on the committee, well, one at the moment, are from the council, so, yeah.
So I'm not sure that I can make it, so that's why I brought it up.
Okay, very good. Well, we'll do what we need to, to get everybody there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions of the council before we open it to public comment?
I actually don't have a question, and I read it fine-toothed comb and appreciate. I do have to publicly just say how much appreciation I have for staff and for the work that was done to make this, what I think is crystal clear. And I think it opens up whatever opportunities for more questions and more details that need to be filled in. This is an opportunity for all of us and for everybody out there who might have questions or concerns, to please get involved at this point with your questions, with your concerns, with your suggestions as we move forward, because I have seen this to be, and I do want to say, this has turned into what could be considered an excellent process. And especially with the two gentlemen who are sitting out there now, talking about how we're going to bring in and continue this era of civility and discourse and bridging divided folks, let's look at this as an opportunity to go forward. And please, if you're out there at home, take a moment to read the staff report. So item number 13 in the staff report for tonight's council meeting, I highly recommend, and I thank you, staff, for your diligence.
Thank you. Other questions of council? No. Okay, with that, I'll open it up to public comment. We've got a few folks in the audience. Peter?
Thanks, Jim, for a great explanation of a complex and convoluted process. Just a quick question. You talked about possibly relaxing sprinkler requirements for second units in the non-WUI zone. Is that something that the town does, or is that a Ross Valley Fire District rule? I always thought that was a fire district.
Thank you for asking that. Actually, when the town, every three years, the town adopts an updated fire code. Last January, the town did that. And like three years before that, the town did exactly this, relaxed the sprinkler requirement in the non-WUI, up to 30% for new second units. And the reason the town was able to do that was, the state fire code, when it came down, did not have the sprinkler requirement. That was a local amendment. So it gave the council the ability to relax that local amendment. It was a recommendation of the fire groups within Marin County, that sprinkler requirement. You couldn't, the town could not have relaxed it if it was the state threshold.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say that, and I think I've said this at a previous meeting, I did attend the last Affordable Housing Committee meeting, and just as an observer, and I was just really impressed with the feeling that things are coming together, we're all hearing each other, and the true concerns that we have about affordability, keeping things from being excessive size, really doing the right thing, starting to, it really feels like it's starting to come together as a consensus. So I was just so pleased at the end of that meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other public comment? So seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. David?
Yeah, I'll just move to accept the report and the status of the update and direct staff as we have done.
Second?
Oh, I thought you were second.
Does somebody, no, I don't second. I'm asking if somebody would like to second. That's, it was a question.
I'll second.
Okay, so, Winesoff motion, second, Reed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. We are moving on to Agenda Item 14, discussion, consideration of encroachments into pedestrian right-of-ways. And Garrett, I'll let you do the staff report, and then we can maybe have John fill in if necessary, but if you could cover this.
For, I would just defer to Councilmember Reed.
Okay, Councilmember Reed, would you like to do a quick overview?
Okay, sure. This is something I've talked about many times over the years, and basically what it is, especially if you don't have to copy the agenda in front of you, and you're not one of the three members in the room, but perhaps watching from home, I will read a little bit of it from the beginning, just to, because it outlines what it is, is throughout most of Fairfax, there are over 100 pedestrian rights-of-way that connect various neighborhoods via what is often the most direct route. In the hill areas, these routes are often steep, and a lot of these necessitate steps to make them more usable, especially for the elderly. And as we know, many of these have been dilapidated over the years. Some of them are working, some of them are not. There's a map showing them in the general plan. It's also available on the Fairfax Volunteer website, fairfaxvolunteers.org. A number of people are familiar with them. They're color-coded there to show their condition. Historically, these routes were laid out at the same time as the property lines and the streets, and as such, they have the same legal status as streets or alleys, i.e., they're not easements over somebody's property that they're in between properties. So they're not subject to being extinguished due to disuse. A lot of times, they're maintained by kids, because they use them as routes to get around the neighborhood, to friends' houses, to school. And they're often where it makes sense, you know, kind of directly between different neighborhoods and the downtown, rather than winding around as the streets do, because, you know, you need a certain angle to drive a car on. In several places, encroachment of these public assets has occurred through building fences. Sometimes somebody puts a garden in there, or there's parking or retaining walls. And occasionally, they've been improved by an adjacent homeowner, up to the point to where their door enters, opens on to this public right-of-way. And this often leads a member of the public to be unclear whether this is actually a public right-of-way, because it's improved just to that point, to where the door is and not past it, because it kind of feels like you're on somebody's private property, but actually you're not. On the, in the town code, when an encroachment on the right-of-way exists, or is contemplated, theoretically, you need an encroachment permit. Enforcement of this is usually complaint-based, and so a lot of times, this encroachment permit has not been taken out. But I guess technically, in the legal sense, that encroachment permit needs to happen And I guess I'm bringing this to the council to see how we want to approach this. You know, basically, if somebody's blocking the public's right-of-way, that's kind of a problem for the public. Sometimes if that's happened because of a retaining wall or something like that, you know, it could be a practical thing is to say, well, you know, you can go around the end of the retaining wall, you know, that's, you know, and saying that's okay for the public to do that, so that they can get to the other side of the right-of-way to connect to the other street. The town has been moved to maintain and put steps on a number of these around, and we're doing, we've identified money to do that. We're doing that in a number of neighborhoods, and a number of people have been doing it with volunteer efforts also. And I guess I put this on the agenda here as a discussion item here, so we can kind of get a read on the different other council members' feelings on it and strategies going forward.
Well, I thought your idea was a good one, which is if we have a comprehensive set of maps, and we are not going to burden staff with the obligation of doing this, because they have other things, but if you or other members of a committee or group want to send letters, it seems so logical, what you've set out here, which is generally, probably by inadvertence, you know, folks have impeded an important public safety, I see this, public safety, route out in a fire situation or earthquake, fill in the blank. It seems to me that the first step in anything that you do when you're the government or you're a public interest group, is that you contact the, you know, the folks who are creating, you know, the concern, and say, let's have a conversation about how we can do this. And I suspect, and you know this 100 times more than I ever will, is that I bet there aren't just seven flavors out there. I bet there are 100 flavors out there of concerns, and everyone's going to probably have to be tailored just a little bit. And I particularly liked the part of your analysis, which said, well, you know, if there's a hardscape there, like a building, it might not be possible to, it would be over the top, to get into removal of things, but it's not impossible to have things skirted around the side. There may be opportunities in the, you know, most extreme situations, maybe somebody buys a, you know, a side property or something that could facilitate that right-of-way being moved in a certain way. But I must say, as I read through your thing, I think that you've, first of all, it's very well-written, and it characterizes quite well the problem, but I think it's moderate and very Fairfax in how you've laid out the potential first steps for a solution. And if that didn't work, of course, there's always a bigger hammer that can follow. But my suspicion with, like, 99 out of 100 Fairfaxians is that they go, oh my heavens, I didn't know, this is very important for public safety, and let's find a nice workaround.
Renee?
No, I was just going to say that, as far as a suggestion, and I agree, that taking that as a first step and letting people know that this is an issue, and that they may have one that is right in their, you know, in close proximity to their house, that would be, I would agree that most people are probably uninformed. But as we move forward, and we're talking about emergency preparedness, and actually the potential for a workshop, that would be an excellent time to bring out those large picture boards of these rights-of-way, so that everyone can actually see. And we'd be talking about it as, here's your egress. Here is what exists, and there are these problems where things are, have been encroached upon, to just start to like generate some information out there so that people have, you know, are aware that it is, that it is even an issue that exists. So we've started well, especially with the work in getting the funds, the Measure A funds allocated to start looking into this. And I know you've worked on it for a really long time. time. So the awareness is slowly building, but I do think in an emergency preparedness forum, we could actually visualize it, and people might start to understand what that actually means, these public rights-of-way.
So I want to add, first of all, John, thank you for putting this together. As John and I have worked on opening up trails, not just for recreation, but for egress in the event of a wildfire, or other emergency, you know, John's well-aware of this, he's been working on this for years, there are encroachments into the areas that we need to open up, one in particular, which was next on our list. And so what I like about this approach is, this is similar to what was done with the properties that were designated as open space in the general plan. Letters went out to people who owned those properties, letting them know that should they want to develop those, they should talk to the open space committee first, and I think there was a process in that letter. One question I have for you, John, is, I have not looked at that part of the general plan, but are there specific addresses? Should we take the approach of moving forward on sending letters out? Would it be easy enough to send the letters out, or is there a lot of research that needs to be done into the specific addresses?
It depends on which one you're talking about. I mean, I think, basically, if you go on to Marin, if you go on to Marin Map right now, which is a database that's available to anybody in town, there are basically more layers of that that are available to town staff than there are to the general public, but basically, any member of the public can go, and you can see the property lines that are there right now. And basically, that's, you know, that's basically what we're looking at, and you can take that to indicate-
The general plan doesn't have a list of addresses?
The general plan does have a list of addresses.
Okay.
And it has a list of the various trails with where they are at the top and the bottom, say, if it's on, or, you know, one end and the other end, you know, with a street address there. And that address is basically not the address of the house on either side of it, but it's a number that is picked to be in between those two numbers, so if number 42 is on one side, number 38 is on the other, then the address of that end of the trail is number 40.
So basically, the list in the general plan could not be used to generate letters and address lists, is that correct?
Well, it's the address of the trail, and that.
Okay, so what I would suggest is this, is that, I think, I like this idea, I would like to work with John on kind of what the letter would look like with the town attorney, but I think what we would, I would like to say is, could we try to research getting an intern in that could actually do this work, to figure out the specific addresses we'd send the letters to? And obviously, that doesn't usually happen in the middle of winter, but could we do something like that, and that could be an assignment for an intern to really kind of delve into and generate the list for us? Garrett?
I would say that that might take a little time, really, all we need, if you just want to send letters to the encroachments, what we're hoping for is, I think, pretty, I'm pretty sure Councilmember Reed actually knows which properties, if he just points to them, on which the trail, general plan has a description of the trails, then we could easy enough look up the address for that specific home, and if he generated a letter, then we could send it out, and that'd probably be just as fast as us finding an intern, although we do, we are in the process.
Okay, well, why don't we sort of, it sounds like there's interest in the idea of letters, as far as getting an easy way to generate what those addresses are, John could probably help.
Yeah, if I may suggest, I mean, there's a way to prioritize this too, in the way that we're also prioritizing different trails.
The only thing I would say is, one of the things that I think we want to do is create a level playing field, and so, by notice, waiting, since this has been waiting for a while as well, to be able to send out the set of letters where everybody would receive them, and like David said, there's going to be different versions of people's concerns, but if the letter is worded in such a way that, here's a notification, there's different ways to address it, and we don't make it threatening, then we get it out in one fell swoop, that's the notice, and then we can start working on other ways to address it.
And in fact, I see your point there, in that, you know, somebody receiving this letter isn't going to say, hey, why am I being singled out?
Right.
Which is a disadvantage of prioritizing.
Okay.
And so I agree with you, yeah.
Okay, well, good. So let's open it up to public comment. We've got some folks in the audience, do people want to step up and give us some public, you don't have to.
You don't have to.
No requirement. Peter?
Thank you, and John actually pointed out one of those streets right next to my house, and another one across the street, which I didn't know. Do these trails have formal names on the maps and so forth?
Generally, not, though, actually, when I've been doing volunteer work on various trails around town, people have come out and say, oh yeah, this house, you know, I mean, this, you know, trail right next to my house, used to be called Sui Shaw Lane, or something like that, and there's some historic point of interest that made it named that, and, you know, that was unannounced to anybody, so, yes, they do have names in some, you know, like Power Lane, for instance, is one example.
Right, and the reason I ask that, one suggestion that might be helpful, is to put some kind of signage where one of those trails meets the street, because, for example, on my street, I wouldn't have known that that was a public street, and so if you-
Peter, just to point out, there are 120 pedestrian trails, the map is on the Volunteers' website, which John worked on. We would love to do something like that in the future, but there are a lot of them, and so, some of what we're trying to do right now is, is try to open up some of the trails, and we're taking it very slowly, we don't have a lot of resources to do it.
Oh, sure.
But, yeah, I mean, ultimately, we would like to have something like Mill Valley has, where the trails are all very easily marked, and people can move through them, so that's an excellent point, there's 120 of them. John, do you want to get started?
And we have done signposts, marking the different trails, a lot of times, they end up with that address system that I talked about earlier. And occasionally, you know, we found out, you know, the name of it, and, you know, Sui Shaw Lane, we did mark as the, as such, it runs between Forest Terrace and Hillside, in case anybody's curious.
The other advantage of marking the signs too, would just, those people would know if their house, oh, I can see how my house is encroaching on this trail, which I didn't know there.
Yeah, and it makes it real. That said, those posts take a phenomenal amount of labor to make and do, and, you know, really, I mean, right now, I think we're at the point of like, well, let's figure out the easiest way to make these functional and useful to, you know, and signs are great, if you've got time for signs, we have some post material still.
Okay.
Just a moment, okay, so, other public comment? None, okay, so I'll bring it back to the council. Would someone like to entertain a motion? Discuss considering encroachments and direct staff is appropriate, so, would someone like to direct staff to, go ahead?
I think, I think staff understands, I don't think you necessarily need to make a motion, it sounds like we'll work with the mayor and Councilmember Reed on this.
Yeah, and I believe, I heard a little bit of voluntary stuff from yourself, yeah. I would be happy to work together with you on developing some sort of letter, but I think-
I think the first step is to sit down with town staff and go over how we figure out the addresses, and we can work on the letter, and definitely work with the town attorney as well. Good, all right, so with that, don't forget, there's a special meeting, so I think I would like to have, I'd like to move to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
So, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so now-
There's a special meeting.
There's a special meeting, and I'd like to, thank you, Bruce, you don't have to stay for the special meeting. I'd like to open the special meeting, and I think we can just move on to the agenda item, or do we have to have a motion to approve the agenda item? Garrett, direct me, please.
Sure, that's fine, I guess we listed it, so if you just want to approve the agenda, and David posting, that'd be wonderful.
I'll move approval of this agenda.
Second.
Okay, Reed, Winesoff, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so with this, Garrett, we want you to do the staff report, please, this is approving contract amendment one with the Conservation Corps North Bay to perform additional work on pedestrian trails, please, go forward.
Really briefly, what staff actually interned to a contract with the Conservation Corps North Bay to make improvements on trails in town, one was the Upper Cypress Trail, and the other was the Tamalpais to Tamalpais. The improvements basically included widening, cleaning up, and repairing, and adding steps as needed for the trails to make them more easier to hike on. Staff actually has been working closely with Mayor Kohler and Councilmember Reed on these projects. The initial work was for $15,000. We've determined that the Cypress Trail actually needs a staircase constructed on the bottom to make it more user-friendly, that's going to cost another $6,500, and what we're recommending is council approval to augment their, approving amendment to their contract for $6,500. There will be some remaining money left within the existing contract, and what we're recommending is we keep that aside as a contingency for unforeseen expenses, or, if that's not needed, then perhaps we would do some additional improvements on some other trails in town. So with that, that pretty much concludes the staff report. Oh, and I forget, that the money is available in the budget, you may recall in your budget, the council allocated $25,000 in park maintenance funds for trail work, and additional $10,000 in Measure A park funds for the same, similar type activity. So with that, that concludes the staff report, unless Councilmember Reed or Mayor Kohler would like to add to it.
Can I ask you a question, Garrett, do we have, do we get Measure A funds every year?
Yes.
For how many more years?
I think it's a total of 11, so whatever.
It was a total of 10.
And more or less, more or less, how much are we going to get every year?
About $45,000.
Yeah, next year, can you start allocating some money toward our downtown parks?
That'd be a council discussion.
Great, I'm just telling you my thoughts on it while I do that, thanks.
I wanted to actually ask, have you finished with the report? Okay. Garrett, I actually wanted to ask as well, so if 21-ish thousand is what was required for, that was two trails, right, Tamalpais, Tamalpais, and Cypress?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get a larger perspective, so, that's two trails, is there a future funding plan for how we're going to continue to chip away at all of the necessary things to, you know, I understand it's tiny slow, but money-wise.
So what we did was, in the budget this year, we allocated $25,000 for trail maintenance, which we agreed at that budget meeting, everyone agreed that that was a good idea, that we would try to do that every year, should we have funds available, and part of Measure J was to include this work. So Measure J included this type of work, and was specific to trails as well, so that may be the way that we funded going forward, rather than general fund. We will, there is a small subcommittee that meets on Measure A funding, and I'm assuming we would do that in the next few months.
That's correct, the idea is, the committee would meet, and then the council would consider as part of your budget process, how you want to allocate, review, and allocate funds.
Right, so, so, right now, last year, we allocated $25,000, plus this $10,000 for Measure A. I think now that Measure J passed, and one of the selling points was the trails, that may be the way we'll fund it going forward in the budget, but we'll address it when we come to the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
I should also add that we are, I mean, hiring the Conservation Corps at this point was kind of an experimental thing, to see, well, what do we get for our money with the Conservation Corps? We have done, been doing trail maintenance in the past, basically with pure volunteer efforts, donating, you know, I've gotten Fairfax Lumber to donate materials for pretty cheap.
And the results?
And the results of those are, you know, they look like they're done by volunteers, basically, I mean, it's excellent in some areas, and other areas, you know, it could be better. And, you know, so there's disadvantages and advan, you know, it's cheap, but, you know, you get what you pay for, too. So we thought we'd pay for something with the Conservation Corps, to see what we got, and we, in parallel with that, have, on Power Lane, we have a volunteer-based effort, where the neighbors have agreed to get together, and they are having a neighborhood barn-raising style thing, and we are, with some of this allocated money, we are paying for materials for that, and-
And results with Conservation Corps versus without?
Well, I think I will just say that it's been very professional, they really have stayed on budget, they're very much so on budget. We have two residents that are involved with us, who are asking for some additional things, and they make sense to do, but one of the things we want to look at, I mean, it's been very successful, the work is good, it's fast, they get the crews out, you know, they're really on time, on budget, and so I think one of our challenges is to really say, how much is enough? Because these trails are really for recreation and egress, and they're not going to be able to accommodate every, a little child, or somebody in a wheelchair, that if we tried to do that, we would get no trails done. So we're trying to kind of figure out, it's also trying to figure out the balance, and so, we picked a couple of high-priority trails, and we think, and my thoughts are, it's a good relationship, we should continue it, but then, that doesn't prevent us from doing things like having what's happening on Power Lane, so there's other models that can be brought in, we can do a mix of both.
No, I appreciate that we're employing the Corps, you know, they're the guys who, and the gals who work for the Conservation Corps, it's an excellent organization, so, good partnership.
With that, I'll open it up to public comment, Cindy, thought you might want to speak on this one.
Yeah, my only concern with doing the trail work in the Cypress Trail, is that we make sure that we include cleanup in that, the trail right now, and maybe it's just because it's been left that way, because you knew there was going to be more work needed on it, but there's brush, there's rocks, there's tree stumps, material that was left there that hasn't been cleaned up from the trail work. So as we look at doing this work, we should be looking at making sure that, when it's done, it's cleaned up. There's signs posted there now, from the volunteers, asking for community members to help, anybody that wants to come and help keep, maintain these trails. So, you know, if we're not looking at doing the final cleanup before we do that, then we're asking the community to take care of trails that aren't left in a position for them to work on, that's it.
We were on that trail, and I don't recall seeing, we were all three on that trail with the Conservation Corps before, when it was done, before we added on this additional work, I'm not sure what you're speaking of, we were all three on that trail.
Okay, well, I mean, I'd be happy to walk it with you anytime, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, since we don't have any members of the, other members of the public, thank you for staying, Cindy, I'll bring it back to the council, I'd like to entertain a motion. Go.
I would move approval of the contract amendment number one with the Conservation Corps North Bay to perform additional work on the pedestrian trails.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Reed, Goddard, and with that, the motion passes, thank you, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, thank you, everyone.
Move adjournment.